Council meeting for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
And all the commissioner. Did you want to start off? That lady or just have one give his presentation?
That's what we're doing. Yeah, so. Sure. Well, this is a follow-up through the email I sent. About three or four weeks ago. We've had some discussions about. Taking the legal organization was formed in Attica for economic development and moving countywide. We had a great track record there. We're still executing on some projects, so many people may not know about it, but they will soon. And in that time period. We developed some strategies which I had sent through in a promotional package. Those packages, those strategies were specific to Attica, but they could translate. Or we could obviously work on many more if you choose to bring us on the county effort. One thing I wanted to do before we get into those packages and discussions, however, is allow. Someone from. You're associated with IBC, but.
International IBC.
I'll let you introduce yourself, but Courtney has come from Indianapolis today to present. And she had a terrific track record and comes highly recommended from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And I just turned it over.
And I'm all. I'm Courtney Zog. I'm a certified economic developer, I'm a certified entrepreneurship development professional by the International Economic Development Council. I am from Indianapolis, but I'm not here to tell you what to do. As I think probably that's the stigma, but I am here to talk about what's coming down the pipe. A little bit about me, I started my career at IBC. About fifteen years ago, about ten years ago, I was started consulting and my husband started a manufacturing company. Husband's bringing her veteran. And in all the work that I was doing across the country, I could not believe. How difficult it was. How hard it was to start a business, especially a construction business, right? They weren't caring cancer. But it was difficult and the work across the country. I had a lot of communities that said, we do, we do support entrepreneurship, we invest in entrepreneurs. But in reality, that wasn't the case. And so when I started Puck up, it was about. Almost five years. That's what my focus was going to be, entrepreneurship-led economic development. So since then, I founded six companies, including a recent tech company and secure housing and care. I've also, as it publicly been announced, I'm a partner in a venture studio, HomeNet Studios. Where they work with corporate organizations and innovation and also entrepreneurship for communities. Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just keep rolling while the slides catch up. So the first, one of the first slide looks. I'd be about the is that the evolution of economic development has taken place over decades. Initially, a lot of it was about business attraction and so thinking about attracting industry to your, to your community. Now it's very successful and very prominent. So large manufacturers, they called it smokestack chasing back in the day, right? And that's how a lot of communities were built and successfully built. Things have evolved since then. Now it's more about ecosystem building, which is much, much of a buzzword nowadays. It's about how do you connect with political actors in your community to make sure that they are supported and growing. So less about how do you attract? You know, your self-focus is attracting business into your community. Now it's like, how do we support the existing businesses and existing people? That is ecosystem building. So you see initial recruitment, entrepreneurship, the small business development strategies. Then customer development, then it clusters around certain industries. So if it's manufacturing here, if it's ag, whether it's healthcare, now it's ecosystem building. So here means. Again, even tax incentives are, are more focused on this for business traction purposes. Economic development organizations and economic developers, their role became much broader, broader. It was less about, okay, just. Let's bring a new large manufacturing to the community. It's like, what about workforce? And so now that umbrella of economic development has become bigger and bigger, it's workforce development. Sometimes it's mental health now, it's healthcare, it's infrastructure. All the things that are still very, very important and a part of the overall strategy, but it's how you're balancing the approach of resources to the. So sorry. Left my water in the fire. Okay, so. So here's one that is very interesting and I wish everyone, all elected officials, community leaders understood that. If you want to create jobs. It's the young firms, it's startups. Firms under five years old are the ones that create new jobs, net new jobs across the country. And you might say, well, that's not true for Fountain County. But I would say has been true for Fountain County, maybe just hasn't had the spotlight on it, right? So this is national data. Of course, we have the dip with the two thousand eight recession. And then the next slide is focused on Indiana. So in twenty eighteen alone, young firms, again, under five years old, created thirty-six thousand new jobs. Thirty-six thousand jobs. So there's often. Misconception, we've been stepping right into the slides. That it's small businesses that create jobs, but it's new firms that create net new jobs in your community. So what does this mean? How do you do that? Well, I will also say this is the longening, right? And so you're thinking about. How do we show progress toward economic development? What wins? What's on the, you know, the front paper? It's okay, attracting new business, but. Think about it in the sense of you're building your community, your economy for your children, your grandchildren. You're not really building it for anything for us, for like me, four years old, mid-forties. You're not building it for us, we're building it for your children. What does that mean? You have to create capital or at least think about how you incentivize entrepreneurship. Differently than how you incentivize new business coming into your community. It means focusing on the talent side. That means things like, what does the K through twelve program look like? Someone was talking about how do we, for the new seal that I found on Google, by the way. Great job. For Fountain County. You know, if you want to do. Seal, how do you engage your youth? To develop some type of program, you're engaging them so that they stay in the community, you're investing in your own. Not necessarily only investing in what you want to attract here. And the last is a local connectedness piece, and I really want to focus on this for just a second because in rural America, I don't know. I'm really. In rural communities. It's the local connectedness piece that is the special sauce. So for example, it would be. I really, you know, I, my mechanic retired in Florida, right? Love them, had them for twenty years, I need a mechanic. And he made one phone call to whoever and someone says, yeah, I know a guy, right? It's the one phone call piece. That's the local connectedness versus in other communities, frankly, even larger, I'm gonna say it's like Indianapolis. It takes five phone calls for you to fix the problem, that's an issue. That means it's extra work, it's extra time, the local connectedness in rural communities is what entrepreneurship, entrepreneurs are creating. This is, this is the special sauce. So this was a. An assessment done for the state by a global research firm, sort of genome. Essentially, they said, Indiana, we are on par with some of the largest global leaders in entrepreneurship because of the local connectedness. And so these are saying, you know, what, they just started two years and a local connectedness. And how that has projected their revenue. So how fast are they growing? Because it takes one phone call in Fountain County versus five phone calls in Indianapolis, right? I'm gonna move through this piece pretty quickly too. So the things to also think about in terms of economic development is what's coming down the pipe that's going to disrupt your current industry. I'm talking ag, I'm talking manufacturing, I'm talking healthcare overall. The first would be next generation batteries. So there's a lot of buzz about the national chips. Legislation, how that actually is going to impact from a positive perspective, Indiana. Also, there's a lot of EV battery discussions going on, there's policies being written. This is impacting what your manufacturers or what your entrepreneurs are going to be thinking about. Precision sensors. Things like with the pandemic. The clearing, I'm not using the correct terminology, but the HVAC system. That will clear the air of any type of pathogens, right? Those types of sensors. Are already happening and are already being implemented in lots of different areas throughout the country and probably here in Fountain County that many don't know about. Edge computing and then five G, like how fast can people get data and information? And how is that technology being implemented in? I would say implemented into the infrastructure through. Globalization, so especially I think with the pandemic, we all understood challenges with the supply chain that we're still encountering, frankly. And so to think about, you know, globalization, not from a, okay, we're Fountain County, what does it have to do with Ukraine? Well, it could actually have to do a lot, a lot with Ukraine because of things like. Ag prices, production and logistics for any type of raw materials or sold materials for your ag users. Things about, you know, returning manufacturing back to the US, how does that impact your supply chain for your manufacturers here? Is that an opportunity? Is that a threat? What does that look like? And this one I really want to hit on, I don't know if there are any Gen Zers in the room. Probably not. I'm a millennial. But this is the future. And so understanding what they want and what they think about, what's important to them. Is how you should be thinking about your economic development strategy. It's things like climate, you know, we can, not today, but we can talk about what does kind of change look like? But they care about it, they think it's a thing. So how, how are we as a community in economic development, in the industry, going to think about how to incorporate that? So that the Gen Z can be entrepreneurs or think about in terms of if they're looking for jobs in corporations that maybe have a climate. Give back program. How is that important to them? How are we going to incorporate that into economic development? Things like sustainability. Social media, I think we all understand those types of impacts. This is who we should be thinking about the future for economic development. And the last is environment. And this really, I would think more about food security part of it. So, you know, certainly in rural communities, there's even. I think not enough attention brought on food security where there's food deserts, there isn't access to affordable and healthy foods. So I have a lot of other slides and I'm going to skip really through very, very quickly and just keep going. This one. So digital twins. This is really interesting. So essentially you're creating a digital version of something that exists. I just went, two weeks ago, I was up in Elkhart County and there was a chicken farm owned by the Amish. And they are creating digital twins of their chickens to know which chicken is actually producing the best type of egg. And why? So the ones that then are identified as, oh, they're not quite what, you know, we're looking for, they move into the line for some food, frankly. I'm really on. So thinking about how is this impacting your current employers, your current manufacturers? What's your healthcare system doing with this? We have a thing that is happening, again, probably even happening here that maybe not a lot of people know about it. This is the future of economic development. So what you're seeing here is a digital twin center. So it's a piston. So this is, this is how education and training is going to continue happening. Everything for Rolls-Royce now, they don't actually train them on any of the unions, they do this. So they don't have to fly them anywhere. Have them train on the physical. Machine until they've gone through this type of training. This is the future of economic development. So we think about facilitation and workforce development training. Think about this. AI. So this is really rudimentary, but I think this is really important. So thinking about how we learn. And also the pandemic brought this to our attention. It's not by taking out, frankly, not taking the course, right? It's not by necessarily taking a book out of the library. It's about watching someone else play fire. And then trying it, failing it until it happens. It's doing the work. It's testing it. So like the entrepreneur mindset, okay, I'm gonna try that, but failed, okay? Let me try it again, try it again, try it again. But I did it by watching someone else and learning from someone else. It's not necessarily going to a course. We can actually go through all these. So I think also about. During the pandemic, folks paying tuition costs. For Zoom. So I don't know how many of you paid, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars for your child to attend whatever university, right? You're like, why are we doing this? It's a shift of the mindset of like, okay, now I'm, I'm an advocate for being in person in many ways, right? But this is the future of how education and workforce is going to happen. How is Fountain County preparing for that? We can just keep looking through. Yeah, there's a lot of things here. Okay, this has to do with. Thinking about virtual assistants, which frankly have been a lifesaver in our businesses. So before the pandemic, this was three point four four, this was according to Ali Market Research. And then the growth of that is up to forty-four billion. So if you're looking to incentivize businesses. What about incentivizing virtual assistants to start their own business? Because look at that market share, think how much money they could be. You know, if that is something that they want to do, there's an opportunity. That's bringing a volunteer community, investing in their own people, right? It doesn't have to be the typical traditional large manufacturer. Working from home. A lot of strength in. Okay, so this is actually one more. So if there's anything else that I want you to think about when we leave here, it would be capital, talent, place. These are the components of economic development. I know a lot, a lot of work has taken place regarding the quality of place here in Fountain County, right? I know a lot has taken place with talent. What about capital? Capital is the hardest piece. It's one that takes the longest, but it's actually the most critical thing to work in the long term. So thinking about. How do you incentivize? Things differently, whether it's people, people that are here, whether it's industry, whether it's new industry, whether it's entrepreneurs. Figuring out the capital needs is the most important. The last thing I'll leave with you, just your resources. So all of this data, if you have any questions, I have all the data sources and then they nerd. But the International Economic Development Council represents, internationally, all the economic developers like, like me and others in the room. You have the Economic Innovation Group, that's a think tank, that's actually developing recommended policies for both local. Among local, state and regional entities in order to think about also economic development. You have the statewide Indiana Economic Development Association on the board of. And the Indiana Technology Information Association, which you would not think they would be focused on place, multi-place from economic development. They've been doing a lot, a lot of the state helps. If you're looking for information about entrepreneurship and innovation, the Hoffman Foundation is the leading grant-making organization, think tank researcher, they're based in Kansas City. Edward Lowe's Foundation is based in Michigan. And then there's a national advocacy group, I'm a state rep for Right to Start. And that recommends policies at both state and local level for entrepreneurship. Are there any questions? I know I had a lot.
So one of the reasons why I wanted Courtney to join us today is to give some umbrella of her state is focusing with that. And how we might be able to plug into that. I know that what she talked about today is something that we don't always talk about because we don't have an economic development. Art to Fountain County. I'm not sure how many other counties don't have that, but it does put us at a disadvantage. You know, there was a time when we focused on the business that came to life. And we grew naturally around nineteen sixty, that stopped. And I think I shared some of that data earlier. We discovered this and the reason I was hired in Attica is because the population of the schools dropped. Very significant issue for any small town. And they decided that they had to do something, couldn't just let that happen. And in the process, I've discovered that it's happening countywide in different ways. Just the population is dropping, which means you don't have a workforce, which means you don't have the ability to attract new investment. Which means fewer kids in the school and less tax dollars and, you know, it's this weird snowball that just kind of takes on a life of its own. We're still in great shape, we really are. But I think if we don't get a handle on it, if we don't invest in the future, we will not be very cheap. And Attica, unlike baby Covington, has sort of turned. It's heading the wrong way. And we have recognized that and are trying to insert things into the community and invest in very specific ways. That will turn the tide for Attica. And I would, I know everyone's proud of their own community, they should be, but if you lose Attica. I mean, you really lost a big part of the soul of Fountain County. And that may seem dramatic, but I've seen the numbers, I know where they're going and it's not good. They're having trouble putting kids on sports teams. So that's not something we really should set by and look at it, in my opinion. So what Courtney was talking about today is sort of, you know, up here. It's the stuff that people sit around and debate and analyze and, and work through and kind of come to a very specific solution. For the county or the city. But it is where the mind is of Indiana. I think they're doing a tremendous job. There's been a really quick sea change towards entrepreneurship. If you look at the pitch that I sent you, that's really in part why we chose to do what we're doing in Attica. We're creating this ecosystem within Attica that will grow its own new businesses. And that starts with the incubator, which you helped fund, thank you. It starts with the incubator, the training center, and then it goes across the road to a marketplace. So that they can test their retail base or food base or whatever, they can test their products and grow their businesses on a very affordable level. It takes advantage of the tourist traffic that Attica has, which is nominal, and so we're heading down here from outside of the community. And it uses that to leverage growth. And then the last one, which is probably off in the future, is the cookery, which is a training center to help grow our food business. Which I think we have tremendous, tremendous potential as a rural community of producing something that's noteworthy and attractive to new. Residents. There's a tremendous one in that package, some of it's off in the future and it will take a lot of time to get there. But we're also obviously working with housing, I mean, housing is a very niche use. And it's sort of handed in, entrepreneurship and housing, especially for rural communities, because. We haven't had a lot of investment in the last probably thirty, forty years in that arena, but it is very lucky. That they've had so much investment. So I just wanted to bring Courtney in to kind of paint the picture of. What's happening statewide and, and why we're doing some things that we're doing in the package that I presented to you. We are under contract with the city of Attica and so we are nonprofit, private nonprofit. That means we can go after grants the city can't go for, we can take private donations which we have. And we can manage at a sort of different level than the city government, which is really nice. Because their hands are tied in some respect. And we can bring in resources that the city really doesn't have. So that's what we've been able to achieve there. There's been, you know, some frustration on the local level, we've been working forty years and we haven't seen anything for it. Oh, boy. It's tremendous amount of work and it doesn't just happen every day, but. What you will see in the next year. But what you will see in this next year is they're starting to tear down buildings, unfortunately. We've got one coming down. Probably this month, in March. And then this summer, the rest of the block comes down. And then we have two sets of engineers working on permits. And this summer, we will start tearing up Perry Street, putting in new sidewalks and trees and parking lots and lights for the first block. Completely transforming. And then we're putting in a public parking lot where some of the buildings were coming down. And then we're gonna build an arcade. The rest of that league has to sit for five years, it's the grant agreement. But you will see a very big transformation within this next year. And hopefully we get our building finished. It's always a challenge to name out, but that means co-reading would start training. The most important part of what we're going to do is to train and build the network. So that these entrepreneurs have a place to go and compete off one another and receive mentorship and to grow. So one thing that happened is very early on, and I think it's true probably for the whole county. I realized that this is not a situation where I'm gonna be able to bring businesses in to solve our problem. We can bring businesses in, we have tractors, we've got a few more coming. But I think that's not what we're solving the problem. So what we're doing is trying to grow advantagefully, training inside. And we're using the assets we have to help that. And really, we didn't have that lock net is growing and less lock net is growing. And so I think that helps with the efforts we have in place now, that's as good as it gets. Because I think it will take off, it will probably take five years for that to really take on. That's what we're doing.
Ron, thanks a ton.
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
No, I just wanted to. Last fall, we became an asset count. You know, we were all sitting around thinking, you've got some people that said they would be interested in incubators and that. But we really didn't know. Dale, Brendan, myself, have been working with Matchbox out of Lafayette, which is exactly what they're going to do in Attica. Exactly. They have brought a training program down here to Covington, Petersburg, but they filled that. Amy Thompson Wright is the head of it down here in Covington. She filled twelve positions in less than two days. They're full for their first class. There is the hunger out there for people to do things like this. So this, all this seems overwhelming and don't make a lot of sense at this point. There are people who want to go to King, who want to go to Petersburg, who want to go to Bill. And buy these downtown buildings after they figure it out. And people will come. And a trip will come through, which will bring people. And this will happen, this. It's just a matter of time, but we've got to do it or we're gonna die.
I think so. You know, changing minds is always difficult. And, you know, we don't have all the answers, but the best will ever do that. That's really important, it's happening. We provide the resources, which then provides the trigger for something else. And then over time, minds change, ideas change, you know? You can see something that's possible that wasn't possible a year ago, but there, you know, you just didn't see it. So that's really what this catalyst does, is it brings in that voice to the community. The other thing I would say is it is really the broad category, economic development. And I think it's a challenge sometimes to have that, because everyone has different ideas and different perspectives. What Vega will do for this council and any other community that signs up is we will provide that umbrella of management and organization and communication and networking. That you really can't do on a Monday morning, right? And we will also help corral with all the voices that are giving input will help corral that. So that you are successful in the decisions that you're in. And we will obviously work for you and we'll work for the other contract holders. So we're not making decisions for you. And do you want to emphasize that? Because I've had some say that they don't want to give up their, their voice, giving anything up. We're just providing the structure and the manpower to make that happen. And so if you have any questions, I could go on forever. We're doing this for a while. One thing I wanted to do very quickly was to talk about the organizational structure. I sent through potential for church, I also sent through a contract. So Miriam, Miriam, you on the line? She able to speak?
Yes, yes, I am. I don't know if you all can see me, but I can see you.
Well, Miriam is our attorney and we're blessed to have her because she is also on the board of Carroll County Economic Development. And she's helped several nonprofits get up and running. And she's been an incredible asset and assistance to those. She worked with me on the budgets, she worked with me on all the agreements. And essentially, we're, we're forming potentially the new Rita based on their structure. I didn't want to really recreate it. And they've been doing it for years. So she recommended that we sign an agreement with each taxing jurisdiction that participates. And so in the document I sent you, I included all of them, including Wallace, very small. But the county gets edit dollars, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. It divides it up among the taxing jurisdictions and it is set aside for economic development. Comes from the state appropriated for economic development. And then, and that's why we would sign an agreement with each taxing jurisdiction. Because we hope that they would use those economic developments to fund Vega's management. And so that's where we're hoping those dollars come from. We don't care where they come from, but you know, it's about that as a recent request. So the budget takes approximately thirty percent of the overall economic development dollars that they get from the state. Right now, I don't know what's happening in each community, but I can tell you that in Attica, those funds were a slush fund. Prior to dedicating them to this purpose, they were used for all sorts of things that made you weren't for economic development, certainly weren't productive. So they set aside some money for us. And then we went back and we had specific programs and asked them to set aside the rest of it for the programs. So the budget that we're looking to spend on Vega management, which includes hiring staff and, you know, all the things that go along with it. It's two hundred fifty thousand dollars that would be split among the whole group if they all sign up. And that would equal about thirty percent of what they get in edit dollars. And then any project related expenditures would be set up under a separate umbrella. So if we're working with the city of King, there's a specific project, it has its own account for it. And its own funds will invest private funds or grants or what have you on its accounting or something. And that allows us to just, you know, work with each community as they need. And we might have, for instance, a cooperative plan or something like that, that's countywide. Maybe the county steps up on that, that doesn't, that's with the other taxing jurisdiction, that's all up to you, you know? But that's how you see it right now. And if you have any questions, Miriam's on the phone and.
I have a question.
Sure.
Who are your board members? Not necessarily names. Up here, you're proposing nine member representation.
Yeah.
What, what is the current geographic representation of those nine? And what is it planned in the future?
So right now, because it's data based, there are Attica based people. They have agreed as a board to step aside. And if we start signing agreements, there's a new board that will be appointed by each taxing jurisdiction. So we can change this, this is just a proposal. But I'm proposing that the county would get two. And then each taxing jurisdiction would get one, except for the smaller ones that are joining together. So the lot, Newtown will get one, Wallace and King, I think it is, will get one. And then we have one representative from just smaller states. And so the way we currently have it set up, Miriam suggested, I think it's a great idea, is that you appoint representatives for you. And you can obviously participate any time you want. But the, by bringing in citizen representatives, you actually increase the conversation. And you increase the inclusiveness and you increase their participation. And so they also takes, they not sound like it, but it takes a tremendous weight off of you. Because these sometimes can be very heated conversations and it becomes more of a community conversation rather than.
Just one more question then of people. So in Carroll County, I'm a little familiar with them, they have four, one city, three towns that are apart. So Fountain County, you're proposing seven or nine, ten different entities to be a partner. Our population's twenty percent less than Carroll County. And so I read a quote this morning, it said, brilliance is taking complex and making it simple. And so can you just kind of respond to that?
Yeah, so they actually include other members of the community, they have actually and so forth. And I, Miriam can speak to that, but we decided to just include communities. And by doing the single representation of Attica and the single representation of Newtown, the lot, which are not the same. We kind of even out the voice.
So it really doesn't mirror Carroll, Carroll County, like you mentioned earlier, you're saying this is kind of tailored after Carroll County.
Yeah, it's tailored after, but it's.
The more it's ruptured, yeah.
And we can discuss it, there's nothing said is done.
I can just try and get everyone's county to feel like they were involved, but.
Yeah, that has a really interesting dynamic that Carroll does not have. South of seventy four is different than those. And it's just like, they don't really communicate in my experience. There's also an interesting dynamic between Attica and Covington. And there's always been competition. And so one of the concerns that Attica residents have and the leadership was that they don't want everything to be penalty based. They want the voice. That may be completely wrong, you know, but there's a perception. And so I think by allowing people to have a little more people voice in it, there'll be less of that.
Ron, have you spoken to any of the people from these communities in regards to portion that they would be responsible for?
I, I spoke to leadership, King, and Beersburg, Covington, and I've heard of Grant's. But I have spoken to them in Hillsborough. I have not really spoken to Newtown, a lot, or Wallace.
I'm just seeking consensus.
I was positive, they want to come to the meeting today and listen.
I'm on air.
But yeah.
I just said here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Over the last twenty, I've been, this is my point for here as mayor, over the last twenty five, thirty years. Fountain County has, I believe, tried to economic development people, probably paid them twenty five or thirty thousand. I don't think they got much out of it really. Been nothing probably in the last twenty years, pretty close. So we need something. My salary is fifteen thousand, six hundred. I, I knew Covington's economic development, I brought, you know, I mean, I haven't been directly responsible to all the businesses. Eight businesses in the last four years, a hundred and forty jobs, and, and they're not manufacturing jobs. They're not set up for that, running out of land. So I don't want, if Covington, if my council would be willing to pay two and a half times my salary. Or something that's based in Attica, we're probably not gonna get a lot here. Bob Shepherd. Dean Beverly, Oregon County Commissioner, paid a small amount to Greater Lafayette Progress for a few years. I think we finally got something now, we're getting some housing dollars. You know, something we made for maybe fifteen years ago. We didn't pay much for it, we're getting a return now. So I don't know how much, you know? I think Greater Lafayette Commerce now is, you know, through Ready Grant is helping us. And it's probably gonna help. I know Attica needs housing, we need housing, because we have a lot of people who want to move there.
So I can speak to that a little bit. You know, Ready Grant didn't have other representation. Brandon stepped in and spent a tremendous hours making that happen with Fountain County. We've not had our representation there either. You know, it's a lot to ask people to volunteer for the level of work that's required to make this happen. That was one grant, one grant. And we have been pursuing eight in Attica. If we're going countywide, there might be tons more. Every grant is a massive ordeal. And in the case of Ready, it's been very challenging. So we did get the Ready Grant. Yeah. And, and we did that because we're a good community player. I think that moving into the future, you not only have to be available in, in the room to get these brands, but you have to prepare for them. And that's the one thing that Fountain County probably should work on is preparing to be ready for these grant programs. If, they don't just hand them to you, right? So a lot of times they're, they require the confidence of people, they require all of these studies. They require financial involvement in an organization. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff that's on the table. You know, if you proceed with some of the smaller dollars that reduce some of the pressure for economic development, but then you gotta manage that. Right? And so I think there's a tremendous amount that Covington moved there from, once they see what's possible. Brad's been incredible, you know? But he's done it because that's his passion and that's his power. Not everybody has it. And with, with Brad steps down and moves on and picks his points, you know? So any other, anybody else want to chime in?
I, I just want to bring up, you know, we're talking about the seed up money. And I know the county, we've already budgeted for the year seed up money, and I'm sure all citizens and towns have it. You know, our seed up fund, we started the year two hundred and three thousand in there. Our share of seed up money is five hundred and sixty seven thousand. So that's seven hundred and seventy one thousand. And we've already, we budgeted seven hundred and eighty five thousand this year. So we're actually fourteen thousand overall on our budget with seed up funds for this year. So, you know, I don't know when you're looking at.
Well, right.
And, you know, there is a possibility we, we're gonna get some economic development money down, down the road. But it has not been passed yet and.
And then what it looks towards? The seven hundred.
Oh, it's in, it's in the budget, I mean, various things. Like the website, county attorney, so the very adult. Those are four inch fairground, training, training education, who know how many cost, the number of students, description, the fee, of course, they can't fill in the dues and. Drive mileage and thirty other terms.
But I do know, I mean, the council, when we looked at this year's budget, we know that there's got to be some economic development. And we did, we were an employee to go to meetings in Lafayette and also to help go after grants. I don't know if that position can be built or.
I've been going to the meetings as such. And, you know, like Rod said, there's been a lot of work forming that board for the Ready Grant. And I think we've been more and more active than what we have in the past. And I think that's gonna be crucial. But again, I think we still have some decisions to maybe build. That's going to be crucial, but again, I think we still have some decisions to maybe build. Grant Boravan used to be on that board, so I have a vacancy there, we have two mayors. The Commissioner President and one of the person, and I'm going to let Brad in, go to the last Ready Grant meeting quickly, and I do appreciate you attending. So if I can get the Attica mayor, you know, to start attending, and, you know, maybe the commissioners need to appoint. A individual, but you know, if we do get an economic development person hired, you know, that person should be on that.
And I might point out that Ready is managed by Greater Lafayette, which is a nonprofit economic development. And they're doing all the management, and so all we do is show up and participate and execute as. As they set it up for us, essentially, Wega would be that. And so, or sorry, um. They're, they have obviously a much bigger apparatus, they need to have that, but they're doing exactly what we would do for Fountain County. And that's one grand. So that grant isn't even possible if Greater Lafayette hadn't stepped up. And that's the situation we're in here, we can't pursue grants, because we don't have the structure, we don't have. The personnel, we don't have all of the homework in place. And it's just, you're enormous network, they hired, the city hired me part-time, I'm a third-year veteran. I'm an architect for trading and development. I'll put it in hell, but I can't go to all those meetings and do all of that, I want to work on specific projects. And they agreed to that, it was a part-time job, it's a moniker, not even close to it. And we didn't even engage on the level that we're discussing now. The workload's enormous, but the potential's. You know, I mean, it's going to take some investment.
You talked about some projects in Attica, some of those were some grant funds that you got. Can you give us some dollar amounts of what you've received during the several years?
Well, we got lucky on the market. And so our kind of has been relentless, we did apply for a grant, but they chose to do housing in rural communities rather. So the city has been providing funds from their, who the beverage staffs, and so we get. Little over a hundred thousand dollars each year, getting funds that we can use, and then the city has. So I think we did probably two hundred and thirty thousand dollars each year, that's not for us. There there's a forty-two thousand dollar number that's for us. And it doesn't count much, but you know, it's great. And then when we moved to projects, we bought the buildings using the money. The county provided money for the interior build out, and then. The city is going to give us three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of ARCA dollars, which is half their dollars, and land. To produce the market, the market is not divisible at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And so we are currently applying for US grants, four of them. And we're also looking at private donations. And so a good example, downtown, the city found enough money to re- to redo the buy building first. We did that, they're going for a life grant, over to tear down the rest of the buildings. That's another. Seven hundred thousand dollars to tear them down and refurbish. They will end up spending almost two million dollars in that one block area. And that, believe me, that took time. It took tremendous amount of work. But then. They have committed to that, we are committing to raising funds through grants and private donations to pull it off. And I can't tell you that I know where the last bunch are coming from, because we're in the process now of buying them. But. There, all, we also committed to putting in housing. And I'm able to work with, Harrison's fantastic, so they've been very helpful in paying for master plans and. Bringing in contractors and developing that. Conversation with Harrison, back in that conversation. And so I've been working privately, also with Mark Little, Ben Esley, been working privately with Lando, who's worked with all those off. On the front of bringing in businesses. Brian Craft has been phenomenal, so he's a realtor, and so we've been working together to make that happen, and then I've been working with Richard. So those are not dollar related, they're just in the room making deals and knowing how many, does that answer it? Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand.
I think that was with the anticipation of the receipts coming in, half a million dollars, and then we had a balance of two hundred and seventy dollars. So it was able to prepare itself.
We started the year with two hundred and three thousand, but if. Every bit of it gets spent this year, we're going to start with zero next year, and that budget will have to be cut because. That is just about every year.
Some of those items probably the county will want to shift to another fund.
Our economic development salary that we have isn't coming out of that fund. So so really the question between the two parts is going to be money. And it's, you know, as he proposed, it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, three-year contract with a one-year termination clause, so we're five hundred thousand dollars into it. At minimum, if it doesn't work, from what I read, that that's really going to be the the standpoint, obviously, twenty twenty-three, there. I I'm not sure that's even doable, the contract states effective January first. If everything comes to fruition and you. We get economic development from solar, there's a possibility there, but you know, that 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 could be allowed with those ones. Are even received, I'm not sure that we want to bank on that, and then your guys is called, but I'm just talking up. So so that's really what we have, we budgeted thirty-five and some change, a thousand dollars. For an economic development person. That is budgeted now, that hasn't been gone after, we were kind of waiting to see what was going to happen. We had talked daily, you know, originally before the first year and etc., but nothing's happened there, so that that position is still open. So there is money there, but but the real thing is. Was that, well, yeah, we haven't tried. But really, the the five hundred thousand dollars will have to have minimum, assuming that it all works great, and you're seven hundred and fifty for three years. I'm, I don't know that any of us can say that economic development is not a great thing for Fountain County, that part's great. It it's really the.
Think we all need to work together.
We don't technically have to fund the two fifty, we could technically fund a rural county, but I'm not sure that's benefiting anyone, we're just. Funding rural county for economic development and not focusing on cities, so. I I feel that if we do, if we need to feature all these major cities, they're involved, or work out the financial enforcement of that, so it's. You know, it's covering the entire county instead of just rural county, I don't see that that's going to be.
And will that change the board, if if cities don't contribute, then are they still going to get a member of the weekly board?
Well, that's something we can discuss, and we set it up so that if you don't.
Ron, one thing that was going to include was a budget out, you know. Is is it two fifty or nothing, then we went, you know, twenty-five or thirty thousand, thirty years ago to two fifty. There's nothing in between, is there any? Is there something, I mean, and does it have to be for three years? I mean, I realize, and people have to realize, things, you know, it's like an incubator, you run, you plant a seed, it takes a while. But if there's going to be some flexibility there on on salaries or. You know, the number of people that are going to work. And I'm not saying Covington wouldn't give anything at all, because, you know. Helps everybody.
I think you just shared about, that's not a problem, and there's a lot in it, it's a lot more than you might think, it's not just salaries. But. You'll you'll be hiring Wega, and Wega is an organization that runs itself, right? So we'll open the books, and you can see it exactly how we're planning to spend it, and, you know, I started with a much lower number. Because I didn't really want to ask that number, and I couldn't do it. So let's open the book so you can see it and understand why we're doing what we're doing, but. Their goal is, at least for three years. Because we aren't starting, we've got a lot of ground to cover, at least for three years, that's how long it's going to take, I think, to get the whole community up and running. And that may sound like an exaggeration, but the amount of networking and interactivity and. Community participation that needs to happen, my experience in in Attica is it's just a solid three years, and that's thirty-five. So it's all, it took us a solid three years for everyone to get their head around it, figure out what they wanted, work through the process. And and then we have like, you know, so that's really why that three-year number is there, it'll minimal the takeback. For us to get the thing upright.
Have you worked a long time in the county?
Yes, yeah, we chose not to touch those pit hours, those are some of the project in law. And we do have a couple that are in that, we're working with them to residential there, because the pool is supportive. And you want to put in forty-seven, we take them down in home, it's in some of that handling, and it's a work on that. The Vice President, he stepped down recently, but he was on. So we have a board membership. We didn't say the county, the county and their one register.
Okay, so, I mean. From conversation I'm hearing, I I, we're not prepared to make the vote today on this, they want more information, we want to know what. What cities and towns are also interested in this, I also think we need to wait and see if we're going to be getting. Economic development money from the solar panels, because that would open up a lot of things for actually development.
Well, any other thing, we're in the process of possibly getting a comprehensive plan, and working on some other things that we do need to have in place. Or, and like I said, council needs to have a budget, so.
Yeah, yeah, those plans. Whoever you hire will have their own process, but those plans, if they're any good at all, require a tremendous amount of community involved. And so we want to make sure if Dale's been through this, we want to make sure that we get a lot of people. Contributing, things can come out of those conversations that will be helpful. We weren't planning on, you just ended your agreement, anything like that today, this is part of our introduction. And so if you wanted to send emails or call me, I'm happy to do whatever you need to do.
I think we'd like to see the budget too. Anything else that you would like to see? One of the questions was. You have the inflation escalation built into this, I saw where, you know, CPI. CPI publishes thousands of different statistics, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, what specific one? Will you use to determine the escalation? If you did the last three years, it would go up ten, fifteen percent. You know, and so if cities or towns would be making a commitment today, but. Just some of these real specific, I think.
And we could, if it if it's more comfortable, we could set a percentage.
Yes, I don't know about this.
There was gifts, basically.
Yeah, they use, there's a big project in Lafayette, the regional airport. And they used a lot of money, private money being spent for that to offset our match, so that was intense. But they also, in my opinion, and anyone, they also somewhat dictated that we used it for housing. Which was very frustrating, so one of the trouble, one of the issues we're having now, and this is one of the, this is a perfect example, being in the room. Need to be in the room sometimes to get something that works for Fountain County. And for Ready too, we have all of these projects we set up. And they're being ignored, in my opinion, and they want now wants to additional housing funding. For rural communities, because it supports Lafayette's agenda, you know, and I'm very frustrated by that, and if you're not in the room making the case of. Arguing the point of joining, it was out, what happened there is.
And I think there was at times, you know, when we're talking about Ready. When I'm up there by myself and trying to bring it back to the council, in my opinion, sometimes I think. They've missed that I'm not having someone on the council, it was, well, just so that you can bring it back to your group. And discuss, is this something we want to do more on? You know, I, I mean, it's nice having an economic development person there, that could talk between the commissioners and the council. A designated person, and it's kind of hard, me as commissioner to do both those roles.
The job is far more difficult. It really is, because there's no straight line anywhere, right? So you're always negotiating, positioning, it's both political and practical, and it's all kind of one of those jobs, so. You you need to be organized, you need to be honest, you really know where you want to go.
I would just say it's very important for the county all to stick together, from now, here on out, moving forward. We're not big enough to be coming to Attica or Beersburg, we don't have the money to be, to be Newtown, Long, we don't. We need to follow the lead of Fountain County four age. I know the county can work together, and you're out there, there is the last of Fountain Central, those kids, they have a great time. And it can be the same county government, city governments working together, and we're truly going to save this county. And I know that's. That exaggerate, but not really, we're losing population every year, we're going to do it, we've got to work together, that's a lot cheaper, you all work together.
Yeah, and what we did, Brad, all we did for Attica, we could do for Covington as well, and Beersburg, there's no reason why. There's a down here now.
Okay, so I need to help each and every one of you have some information from regarding the health commission. Okay, so I need to help each and every one of you on some information regarding the health commission. Um if we wanna opt in, mop out, um we did talk to a woman from the governor's office. Detail, I talked to Kelly Striger, Lock County. Um commissioner, and she's also in Davis County um health department, administrator. Brandon. Where she is, but anyway. My concern is. One of Tim and I have a number, we're looking for a sample. Um because we didn't wanna be back with the COVID, the mandates of this, of that. They have told me it is not that anymore. Forget about COVID. What it would um do. You know, if. We didn't talk to Jenny after the conference. Yeah, we go to left, that's high.
Yeah.
Keep going. Pressure driving. I don't know. Any direction has changed, I don't know. That's what I was thinking. I think we did talk to Jenny. In detail, so if you notice the board, you know, the services. We already have that in place, so. We're gonna really didn't see an issue with that. I think there were some things that were tweaked. Um from when it first began because the commissioners, um the IACC commissioners. Was fighting. They didn't want mandates. They didn't wanna be told how they could spend their dollars, blah, blah, blah. Um so it looks, it appears to me after talking to these individuals, Tyler, the vice of Fountain County. And and talk to his commissioners, council, whoever. Um and if you look at her email that I sent you, there is detailed information and they're explaining. What Centerville Board, you know, could be for the county, you know, substantial amount of money that could help us. Um. I was up there to a conference with um from them uh. And you know, they may opt in, I don't know, it's just go to the Warren County, you know, wants to do. Uh what's what will benefit them, but I just wanted to bring it to the council attention, um just so we could work together. Is this something we want to do? Um it would possibly be new programs, which would. Mean new personnel as well to make sure that these programs, you know, are done properly. Feel free to reach out to Jenny or Eric um or anyone at the health department to see, you know, what are, what their thoughts are, you know, on Centerville Board. And if they. Are interested because I know we're a little hesitant of what's gonna happen in year three. We know it's for five years. I think the uh three year. Average is like three hundred and one thousand right now. With our local health payments and our trust grants, what was explained to me, those would all get. Cool together and then you would not be going through the state, the council would be setting up those budgets. So gone are the days where, you know, how we were restricted on, you couldn't raise this. Line item because, you know, whatever. So if someone, we're giving out raises. You had to offer that somewhere in another.
Right, then you just increase once you increase the time.
Get away with something, you could not fit that back into that. So I'm understanding that's sort of longer gonna be the case.
Provided the bill gets passed.
Right, and I would tell you, the executives were thinking, some of them were really dead set against it. And Brian Beer from Johnson County, for him to make a turn and say, you know, I think I think I would be inclined to vote in favor of it is something.
So so looking at the chart, she said, we are currently um receiving about three hundred thousand dollars per year average. Eighteen dollars per capita. The funding would be thirty three dollars, almost thirty four over capita for a total funding of five hundred fifty seven thousand. With twenty percent of that being our match, so um a thousand. So they're gonna be funding four fifty to our hundred, our total combined five fifty seven.
But that's for. Three years, five years?
That is.
Well, they did a three year.
That's on the area average, that's yearly.
So five hundred fifty seven thousand, we have to provide twenty percent of that.
That's correct.
Okay, which is.
Hundred and seven thousand.
Right, we'll consume about two hundred thousand less in years than what we're trying to do.
But I think their main goal, um I wasn't at it, but their their main goal was the eighteen dollar per capita. When you look at the state, if I remember from a conference, our state dollars spent per capita um when compared to us country is significantly less than the rest of the country.
Forty.
Yeah, exactly. So they they were trying to up that per capita dollar, that's what they're really after. But when you see the eighteen up to thirty, almost thirty four dollars. Um that that's really their goal, is to get that per capita dollars spent um up.
So by budget time, we're gonna know.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly what figures are gonna be.
And like I said, you know, feel free to reach out to the governor's office, talk to Tyler and.
So I think the main scare that comes with this was reservation is. What do they mandate? What do they make us force back into a corner? Do they force us into a corner that we are unaware about at the moment? Um there was an email sent to the three of us um on behalf of that county. Uh that stated, you know, if everything's great, everything not like that, everything perfect. Does reality check out with that? You know, only once this bill get passed, will we will we know what it actually physically looks like. It looks great on paper, it looks. Of course, talks way cheap. So it looks really great right now in conversation. They're talking, everybody enters spectacular funded health department, which will be great if it came out like that. Only they don't, which you don't want is that um become really hard to maintain and really expensive to maintain. So I think that's the reservation, that's the negative side of it, is what the state will mandate with these with these stipulations.
That's right.
They even making us help.
Yeah, right.
So that was the concern originally.
That that's a concern, yes.
You know, you feel pretty comfortable with that now, but that's not the case, but. I believe you don't have to have it, okay?
And and really. I would say ninety five percent of the state is backing.
Yes, but I know there are some, even though they're inclined to vote for it, they're still gonna opt out the first year. See how that's, they wanna see the data, you know, whatever. So now my concern is our twenty percent match that we would not buy.
On that, which we cut it way back, our tax rate, because we were setting at a million dollars. And at the time, Dr. Sharma thought it's his expense and we told him it wasn't. So I mean, a lot.
What the health department, the our new health officer board um doing.
Yeah, they have a really great team working up there right now. Yeah, they're doing well.
Feel free to stop by anytime. Um. Yeah, they they've got some great ideas and I think this money could help them, you know, offer some new programs. So like I said, I feel a lot better about it now than what I did when I went to where I started the conference. That was my.
Have to wait and see what the final outcome is on the bill and and then at that. Point, do we have to agree to the twenty percent or once the bill takes effect?
Hey, for what's the often period, like do we have the often timeline or?
Uh they haven't really.
And is it a twenty twenty four budget?
Yes.
Okay. Then then we'll know by judging.
And so as you can see, there's some salaries. I did send each of you. An email regarding current salaries for individuals who made multiple doctors and things.
Okay, I'd like to talk about that just a little bit. My concern is. You're paying, you want to pay one physician more than our county office holders are getting. And like Colleen, she deals with thirty five million dollars a year. And funds and the health department brings in four thousand dollars a month, fifty thousand dollars a year. Our clerk collects more in fees and has to do reports for more than. In one month, more than what the health department does in a full year. So and I would like to see, since we've cut down, I know the workload is not cut a third since we've. Split over Warren County, but population wise has, I'd like to see some funding, I mean, see. What are permits and things? If it's running the same as it was on those two counties? Right, and we haven't gotten any yet for this new, see, all we have is, we haven't got our January. Right, so I've got all the figures for the past ten years, how many reports, and I'd like to see some before we jump that salary.
Concern was I have an individual doing administrative work. That got cut from the health officer because the health officer at the time did that work. And at one time he didn't supposedly, you know, he picked and chose what he wanted to do in the last half of the. But that was cut, so then it's like it's almost expected for all the work to be done free.
Well, David, how many employees do we have now in the health? Or or okay, how many did we have when we were two counties?
We had a. We had.
Those have one nurse now.
We had that grand coordinator. Um. She wouldn't do anything.
I I mean, I just like.
Yeah, but.
And then does how much money is being brought in and?
That director's job also requires a bachelor's degree for the job description per basically was, I think she got it from the state.
Do you remember the uh job description that was drawn up by the health board last week, the health board that. Administrator. Of course, you know, nothing was done, that decision was not fulfilled, you know, because I just continued to let Dr. Sharma. Do the work.
Well, and and also I looked at a hundred and fifty thousand population counties, their environmental health specialists are making forty six thousand to fifty thousand. And the hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand population, it's twenty nine thousand to forty nine thousand. So.
And and so, yeah, they're an environmentalist position, you are paying what forty? What what is the amount on that?
Forty five.
But when you got that individual doing environmentalists plus another position, I think that should be taken into account, but I think he's doing two extra. Yes. The environmentalist grant coordinator and office administrator. Well, you got here.
But we have. Now we only have one.
And he's also a grant writer. He's doing, you got that, you know, you have to have, like you said, under four um help. Sort of said, you know, all that stuff, like you gotta have that individual in order. Right, to get the fines. So I understand what you're saying about, like I said, oh, I was. They're underpaid as well because there's a lot that is expected of them, so I get that.
Yeah, I mean, they're they're all, I would trade them.
Yes.
This year.
You know, for them, because I would like to see them being compensated. We wanna keep our good recordings.
What we actually probably need to do in the future is bring, I don't know who, someone in that knows what everybody does, order clerk. Certain pay for orders, or pay for clerks, or pay for whatever. And then if you're upset because you're an office holder and you're not making as much of that, we'll run for that position. That's just what we're gonna have to do.
Think, you know, instead of bringing the firm in, because I know Ken Permanum. Um does provide that service. But I also seen some counties that have it and I see the amounts of their main, I don't know why you couldn't just look at that and just.
Oh, yeah, and that's what we did this year. I I got all the surrounding counties and. Uh a couple of counties that are our size and got what their their salary. And we looked at it and that's why we tried to bring ours up.
This county does not look at the um. The auditor, the treasurer, you know, and anything saying the workload is just. Getting rid.
Yeah, that's exactly, and that and that's why it is reflected in in the auditor and the clerk provided the two. Busy, I think, accessory and.
My concern, my concern too is. If if there isn't an increase. That she will not do the other two jobs, she has strictly environmental, so then we have to hire somebody. And so.
And she.
And she doesn't, the health insurance, so you know, county is saving money there.
And I will say, she has since the split was announced. Done a tremendous job for Fountain County. She was, she was one up there watching her back. And she does, she's, she does an excellent job. I don't, we couldn't find anybody in there.
So that's one of the. When you're talking about the environment was. There, it seems that we're needing county attorney more on environmental issues in the county and so.
Our our attorney, in my opinion, is over.
He can't keep up with what the health department is, their demands, state. I mean, it's coming down. They've gotta do this, they've gotta do that. You need to talk to Jenny, Eric, you know. I know that their workload is escalated in the environmentalist area. And I'm sure Roger, you know, you got, you're very aware of a lot of that as well, not just in Fountain County, it's everywhere. I was just gonna ask you, should we restructure that and dedicate into doing environmental work and or doing administrative side of things? Based on that we aren't covering two counties anymore, but it sounds like the work is still there regardless of levels.
Well, and that's where we'll know when we get a report on how many.
Yeah.
Permits are issued, but we haven't received one yet for for the new year, so we don't.
Oh, there's Jenny. I've been here.
That's in front of food, there are twenty permits for Warren County. For Fountain County with um permanent and seventy five permits for food and probably fifty to sixty for um in rare ones. So there's a significant difference in. Smart food. Um Septic, I can't really speak on that, that's Eric's department also, so as far as the money, the yeah, as far as money coming in, it's more of a not.
I would say on the Septic side of it, uh just from experience that I had with it. We had a few more Septics in Warren County because they had zoning, so the houses and all the changes would be caught right off the bat. So they'd be required to do stuff. I know Fountain County is starting to step up and a lot more is showing up. And because of the population difference, you're you have an awful lot in Fountain County that needs to be addressed, so.
And I think.
Yeah, we have.
And then on top of the Septic. Just so everybody knows, and I have paperwork documentation to show you guys. The environmental side of the health department is over eighty percent of that department. The rest of the human medical and stuff like that, eighty percent of that department is environmental issues. Whether it be hazardous materials, Septics, food, uh any of the other things, I mean, you know, infestation, anything like that.
Clean up.
Clean up properties, all that stuff.
And it's a little chat, I don't know what money's coming in, but what I. You know, we don't have a staff to do it. And you're not having this all ever.
Like I said, we got a phenomenal path right now. It's it's really, I put nothing in there on the date, but. Very much.
Well, what Brett said, you know, our committee process is starting to be implemented to where we could, you know, get some bees and. To offset. I do think um.
We, yeah, just for thought, we we need to thank Fountain County and a separate attorney for the health.
And Jenny, I printed out everything you've sent me, so everyone will get the printout.
And, and I only was correct. I'm, I'm just gonna be transparent. I'm not gonna do this job for the environmental pay, and that's what I'm getting today, that's what I have been getting, and I just can't do it for myself. And I'll bear this in mind though.
Thank you, Jenny.
Appreciate it.
So, just so everybody knows, when I was working the system, I brought in the video and started increasing it. That's one thing, the public realizes they need to pay for certain things, and we weren't charging. And so I started that implementation, they've increased it over the period, and they're still not the same as surrounding downs. When it comes to permitting.
Jenny?
Yeah.
How long have you been with the county?
Seven years.
Excuse me?
I'm a seven year.
Jenny, how, how many times have you gone out, been on the twenty-four seven rule? I read, and I read into the in your, uh, background, your education, and so when I know things more in, in environmentalism, right? The number of hours you have to have no pass, any of the stakeholders, I know that.
So I have a bachelor's degree in health and safety, um, education, and then I can get another call. So, um, I don't have a master's degree, but I have a certificate and a.
So that is two degrees.
But, yeah, well, to, that, uh, bachelor's degree, yes, um, master.
And so I'm saying, Jenny, that twenty-four seven rule, you go out twenty-four seven, you're on call, twenty-four seven. And you're dealing with a lot more things at your fingertips, other than what the man that people pay for that. And so there's a health environment issue, your health issue.
It's a very diverse position, um, you might have knowledge in several different areas, and good conscience, good conscience, that is. And it's all environmental, anything environmental, who's across our path, right?
So, so when, Jenny, where would you go out? In this twenty-four seven call, when, when do you go out to take care of these different situations? What time of the day, evening, night, or whatever?
Yeah, it's any time that we get a call. They kind of, if there's a, a food, um, truck, it's one down thirty-four that I have to go out on, yes. There is, um, we've been called out with the chair of department states, uh, police, after hours, um, on some home issues. We're there, so, um, you, you see a lot of different, um, environmental concerns that we have to stay several hours over, um, just to ensure the, the safety of the, um.
Do you have to continually upgrade your education every two, three year, every year, you have to go ahead and keep upgrading the position as far as education is?
Continuous training, yes, yes.
Who pays for that?
Um, it depends on what type of training, um, you know, whether it's personal training that I want to do, or if it's training through the state, training through, um, things that is offered to the health department, a lot of times the health department will cover that. Um, with COVID occurring, there wasn't, um, although during COVID, that has been, I did give the, um, the certificate of health.
I think you're doing a good job, Jenny. Um, I think you have been compensated for that. Dudley, uh, we were just talking a minute ago, you know, as our budget, as we look at our budget. You know, Jenny, we have to be kind of careful so that we align, you know what I'm talking about? Somebody over here, somebody over there, that's what I'm talking about, you understand what I'm speaking about. But I think you didn't be compensated for that. You, uh, you got two jobs. So today, you go in at eight o'clock in the morning or seven, or whatever, and tonight, you know what time you're gonna get off, it's your duty.
You might, you might not start at eight o'clock this morning, might start at three o'clock.
Now, and Greg, what I'm saying, what, to me, what I'm trying to get to, I read all of your reports.
Yes.
Down to the, I've read you, and I know your board. And when I saw this report about an increase in salary, yeah, you gotta think back, we are. And so Dudley, I, I don't know, I just think, and council, I, I'm not comfortable with you. But I, when you're out there at your job, and you don't know what you're gonna get into, you gotta bundle up, you gotta wrap up, you gotta be safe, you gotta glove up, whatever it might be. And you don't know for sure what you're gonna end, you know you've been trained in those situations. I just think we better take a look at this situation for Jenny, and, um, and that, I don't know how we're gonna, how we can do that. And another thing, Jenny, when are you expecting something like this to happen, as far as an insurance?
Last year.
And then, if I don't ask, I won't know. Uh, I'm one of those first to go and ask for everything.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I, I, from what I see, Greg, uh, what I see, what I see from you and, and the reports, I think you're doing a great job, you're covering our back. You're covering our back, so appreciate that.
Here's another thing, is I get the maybe disadvantage of them that advantage me, um, because somewhere around, I gotta see their movements, a lot of them, they probably would like. Uh, but the timeliness, but Jenny means nothing, um, I've been passed there on Sunday, and she's in there working, um, especially during the transition. Like all those, all of our new employees, um, except for her and Eric, like, those employees need to train, there was a transition process, there was no one there. She did all that, um, all the files, all the, she did it without any question.
You're glad I don't worry, you're glad we, uh, animal. Like, there you go, this reason we read the Paul's report, if you see the report. The cats and the dogs, and the amount of infestation. And so Jenny, I, I'm just saying, all that goes, probably back to you. You know, dead dog was battling with personal workers, and then lived there, hellman come to us, say, you know, there's a dead dog in the porch over here? Who's responsible now, and they would not be, like a science thing, right? But here, cause, well, who's gonna call, what's going to help the department? That's her.
If it's not a glamorous job, it's not a, a go. It's my bad, that's hard. To, um. Saying for, for the county.
So the other part of that is, she's in the office, those employees in there are gonna call her, they have an issue too. At this point, you know, take away the environmental, as administrator, her called her too, um, so that's what I do a little.
Okay, I saw, Jenny?
I love that, you're also a test.
So you would be calling her department head as like Jason's daughter?
Essentially, yes.
As she would be a department head, like this.
Yep, yes, yes. Those, those employees are, you know, reporting somehow, and she would be.
Yeah, cause you are the office administrator.
Right.
Yep, one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Forty-five, forty-five is what I'm gonna wipe up the office. Put you back, I mean, like, what is Eric's? I'd just like to say, since the beginning of the year, Jenny and I have had a really good working relationship. Things were left in a, in a mess on those grants, we had no idea what was what. She has went to the state, gotten the answers that we couldn't get before. And it's, she has done a lot for the health department and for me as far as you know, sometimes I get money, I don't even know where it goes because no one has so taken the time to say, hey, we got this coming down, expect this. So it has helped me in my position, and Jenny has put in a lot of hours on some of these grant monies that we've gotten just since the first of year.
Good recommendation.
Yeah.
Hi, I mean, I'm. Um, I'll, I'll stick up for the council here, I was an outsider, but, you know, I sat in, I was preparing this last fall, and I mean, the council was extremely frustrated to know how to budget that health department, and where to put anything, so you know, to say it's all the council's fault, or to put the blame on, you know, and we just find a way to fund the entire thing, it's frustrated with the council, and they were pretty upset at the time of not knowing how the council's gonna set up.
And I don't think he, I'm sure. Probably didn't, no, we, we just didn't. Point it.
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody's giving us any direction, I mean, we've had the right, we've had the doctors, one-third that salary because we got, only take care of.
Uh, well, who's gonna do those?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, so, I mean, so, don't you, and I assume.
The council, you know, it's, I mean, someone is doing it, that they're gonna fix it.
I don't know that the, there's funds or not, to save the whole thing or not, I'm just.
Well, we. We can vote on it, but then we will have to advertise it if it's passed, and then do changes salary ordinance.
Question, so, let's say you do amend her salary and you wanna use local health maintenance. That would be carryover, that would be the same, using those funds, otherwise it'd use, you know, your health funds that nine, then cut.
But you wouldn't, you have to go to the state though to get approval to use those funds?
Use carryover.
And we haven't forgotten, give me information on the carryover we asked for last in the last year.
Brenda, you said, Brenda, you said something about using the P A D B.
Yeah. Well, I think, um, that's already being budgeted, isn't it? That, that makes the area, that makes.
Where it lasts. That, that's grand only last, or, or is that just a yearly thing?
Well, I think we.
The twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, we get that every.
Every year.
Certain thing, and they would use that this year, and then some other time. I, I don't know, it sounds like, uh, this.
Well, if we have time to get the state to approve the funds, if we use the, um, local health maintenance funds more, usually.
The trust.
Yeah, the trust, but how much is in overall?
About.
Oh, I forgot, that says, have, have we split with Warren County yet?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So we have, that local health has a hundred and fifty thousand in there, so we total six.
There you go. I don't know.
What's your date of that report?
I know, it's, it's one thirty-one, but I don't, I don't like to check, I think you're right for that.
So you have local health maintenance, got a hundred and thirty, about a hundred and thirty-three, so we could do the additional half out of one, half out of the other.
So, is she, are we looking at, is it just hers, or hers and Eric's?
Eric, Eric, Eric's got ten percent.
Yeah, I was asking for five thousand for Eric. Yeah.
But he's taking the grant, right?
Sixteen-five increases her.
As a separate?
Yes.
As a separate.
Like a, yeah.
So, but you work it through, but you gotta listen to that later. Two separate, uh, positions.
Uh.
Don't you have to listen to?
No, we, we did test it as environmental slash. Didn't make.
But she just.
She gets environmental, she's not getting the. So, so there's the ten thousand that was given to the doctor, and you.
I mean, no, I mean, we, we're, that's already, but, we've got a third because.
Yeah, Sydney, we've seen her, I actually emailed an Excel spreadsheet that showed like, what line item is there, they'll take those. That's sound of the additional preparation, it's getting more and more.
They're paying out three different. Well, except if we take half out of the trust, then half out of the other, the other fund, it won't be daddy pack dollars. And, but you don't have to, the state gets them because.
Not having advertised.
No, I think we're so, I've advertised, because we might just have those.
Right.
So, we are making people.
So that, uh, what?
So, for the, you know, Eric's. Yeah. About the, the environmental.
Yeah. Local health department, the trust, yeah, with the half out, trust, they're gonna have half out.
How many?
You know, there's a, I'm excited, I don't like. So therefore, we still have to have a. Okay, so I, I would entertain a motion that we increase um, Eric's five thousand, and what was the sixteen?
Five and five.
Sixteen five one five, we take half out of the trust fund and half out of the, uh, local health maintenance.
It can, yeah.
Half where?
Half out of the trust and half out of local maintenance.
Kelly, now we're discussing whether that's the appropriate motion to change the title, so it's.
Uh, I thought we did environmental slash. Yes, that's when we, when we did, we did environmental slash on both of them.
Yes.
So, is there a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So hers would use the level sixteen.
Five.
Sixteen five one five.
That's all, this last one, correct?
No.
Back. Motion, then a second, all those in favor? Thank you very, very, very much.
And just to be clear for public comment, that is for additional duties that those are, that those individuals are doing, that are never part of that job description, right?
They change.
Yeah. Yeah, correct.
Exactly, so, you know, I don't know, council wants to have a separate line item for those amounts, you know, or.
Yes, we'll have to have it under those.
Thanks.
Well, separately, gotta get the state approval, then you have two funds.
Right, but when you pass for carryover, do you ask for the line item as well, right? So, it would be done by the end of the, yes.
Okay, so you're going, so we want a line item of those two counts.
Sure.
Um, exactly, well, we could just do Eric's under one of them, five thousand, and then, uh, ten thousand out of the other and the
The remainder.
The remainder out of the one we're doing, five thousand. And, so is this contingent upon state people, or is the the, no, it's been approved, if, if, they say, yeah, that we'll just have to take it out, but we'll have to take it out of the health. But that's where we want the request first, it's those two.
So Kelly, Kelly, I said a minute ago that you want that listed as two separate positions?
No, there are already.
There are, but that's.
Slash being there.
Yeah, maybe, well.
Yeah.
And? And what else?
He doesn't.
There you go.
That one's front and was that under Eric?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yeah. I'll talk to you for a second. You. This better go for. One over one. At the health, the other day in county, in the commission meeting, you said there was only three counties that really didn't want to go with that.
Well, no, we were the only three, we were the only three that stood out publicly. There, there are all kinds of counties that question that they just don't get involved.
It's something.
Yeah.
So so the thing that I kinda thought was a negative there as far as the health department is concerned and.
Oh, it's been a major topic of the commissioners conference and things. They just, and the main thing is, we did not want to turn them into another. That we went through the last two years, the pandemic. We didn't want state to have control over our county health board to tell us every move we were gonna make.
Right.
We did not want to lose home rule. They are telling us now that there is no way you will ever lose your home rule.
I've kinda had mixed emotions when I read, when I read through that. You know, you've got a lot of people that that association, Indiana Commission and council say, hey, we're all for this. Right? Now, look, at the backside, how's that gonna affect this county wise? You know, even if you opt out. You're still getting money. You're not hurting.
Yeah, right. Still think it's about money that you're getting right now.
Right, right.
It's like incentive, you know, and we have to buy it. You got incentive as far as money. Well, I understand there will be somebody here close up that will represent the state coming in to check us and make sure that we got the proper amount of money in our health department.
Now, the health department will still have to do reporting. Okay, right? Is Jenny's tobacco? Right.
I would say there'll be more oversight from the state to be sure that we have implemented all of their guidance that they're recommending for the funding we're receiving.
Yeah, so like the core services, we gotta make sure we have all those in place that we do right now. So, you know, we're good there. And like I said, they tweaked some of these others to where it lets the county decide how we wanna spend our dollars.
Yeah.
And that's all, that's what we've been passionate about.
I, you know, I understand. That's, that is my concern. You don't wanna lose that local.
Exactly.
Well, you want, we want to have money here.
Right, right. Yeah, of course.
We want it our way.
Yeah, exactly.
The other big one.
So am I saying this right? That you're still gonna have to report things to the state of things going on in the health department, right? They're continuing to report them.
Okay.
I guess that's our check and balance. They're gonna make sure, but yet they're not dictating what we're doing.
Are you talking to the G P H team? Or you?
Just.
Just.
In January, yes.
Yes.
I would think if ones are getting the.
There's two questions. Yeah.
I I do have two other things on here that are not listed in all those minor, so I'll go briefly.
I did have another question. If you had any discipline or damage job, um, is this a non-identity position that you're you're willing to pay or is it? There's another question. So you know, there is.
I don't know if that's. The powers that have the number in councils, the handbook.
Department, yeah.
Some of them. Some, I want, they still kept their hours, kept track of their hours. I know years ago, we had lawsuits and I had the chief deputy go ahead and log their hours just so if there was a lawsuit, I knew if they were working or not. If we want to continue, I don't know if that's why. We'll talk to the county attorney about that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I have two, two items on here that are not on this list that are gonna be kind of simple. The March second, the housing seventy-seven, the second heard, I sent an email out to everyone. Was everybody able to get online and register to attend this? At that note, you're looking at. Send that so that um.
It's been. It's been.
I'm talking to. Okay, I'll send it out to everyone at the end. I want to see your wanting. They wanted real estate people. They wanted. Okay, I have two. And I haven't looked on there again to see who signed up. But anyway, they wanna break out into little groups and discuss housing. Study, it's like a forum or something. They've done it with some of the other counties in the regular. Okay, I'll resend that. Okay, the other thing, and I reached out to Dudley about the end of January about a comprehensive plan. At the time, um, we were running out of time to go through O C R. It would have been cheaper for us to go, but then again, you have to go through groups to do that. So Warren County did their comprehensive, you know, they just paid out, they paid forty, fifteen thousand. So if we want Beam Longest and that to um, work on a comprehensive plan, I need feedback from the council on proceeding. I know it's something, you know, we need in place, especially if, you know, economic development, whatever.
There's a lot of.
It's a lot of money, forty-five to fifty-five thousand, they say is what it would cost to do.
Okay, but is this comprehensive plan gonna look at economic development also? Because I know like Petersburg, thing is, you store badly. Is it something they're gonna look at or what can be done to help?
So just matter is, what I would gather like from the O C R, and it kind of brought in, it does not who does it over to help fund it, but it looks at everything. And it's a timely process, but it looks at infant cities, um, not only just specific needs here, but everywhere. And it's there stuff through every project. Um, growth, expansion, economic development, um, timely, you know, immediate needs versus long-term needs. But there's a lot of funding that we can't even go after, even if we do get an economic development, until we have a comprehensive plan in place. Um, and and this is not like a three-month project that's why I'd rather it will take us, you know, like a year at minimum to get this installed.
Devin, Warren County just went through it. It took us a year.
Yeah.
We had several public meetings, we had several, said business meetings, they said, we had, they hired a company to do it. And it, I don't know what their final cost and everything was, but it took a full year to come up with.
My experience, my experience has been there's ninety-two counties and there's ninety-two imperfect ways to do it.
True.
So Fountain County, if it's something new, you could just peel off two or three topics that you would wanna do for your first two or three years. And then two years later, you could peel off two or three additional things. Otherwise, you're, it's gonna be a massive, we can't get anybody to go with Brenda to a meeting in Lafayette now.
Yeah.
And so there's gonna be childcare meetings, there's gonna be housing, there'll be park and recreation meetings, all the government entity meetings. So it's gonna be massive undertaking. The reason why some can do it in a short amount of time is because they've been doing comprehensive plans, but they have things in place. Where we're at ground zero or below ground zero on doing this. So. Oh, I think.
Henry County just, they're in the process of redoing theirs. I think they say two to five years. The city of that just did theirs. Okay. And so I'm wondering if some of these grants that we could apply for, if that's not a stipulation that you have to have a comprehensive.
They don't permit it.
Probably missing out on, I mean, we only have some support.
It's just like, you know, I I know someday that I'm ready to kind of highway garage, it's gotta be replaced. So. And you know, we'll get the salt bar. And I hate put that kind of money in until we know when and where we're on good to building.
So I guess my question is.
You do need a plan.
Do I have the council's blessing on telling Beam Longest and that to proceed with getting together, what needs to be done? I just need to make sure that you have other companies or that's the one you didn't want to go in there, I guess. Well, we're.
Okay.
Yeah, they all attended. Well, that's a master plan.
We, yeah, we started blocking.
Two different.
And they decided they couldn't, when they're cutting days, and they suggested. Beam Longest and that, it just happens to be their lo, their local rep is Patty Smith, who's B R.
County.
She's building a house over here at in Warren County, so it'll be close.
So the master that we looked at was more specific just to the government entities, where this is very long.
It doesn't really touch on master plan against you so much as far as what you need to plan on, you know, your air conditioning, your.
Yeah.
For, you know, whatever, like you want master plan. Like I said, we've had um, Maroresco and Arcaterra, you know, two different plans for master plan. Um, I don't think we totally wiped it off the table, but we just didn't sense the support of doing a master plan. I still think we need to, and we still have something in place that we can act on as commissioners.
Yeah.
Um, because the request for proposals, you know, now I got one.
Yeah.
Does Beam Longest and that and other counties?
The the way Patty said, yeah, the John, says name, yes, he's the go-to guy for doing the.
That's what is to agree on there. Um, since we don't have economic development funds right now, I mean, and we use our funds. April.
Problem with it and we, obviously, we just have to amend, you know, our, you know, whatever, correct? We just have that. I don't know if we fall under one of the line items every time, because I think it's capital. Passes or services, you know, but it's.
Yeah, I think you'll have them in there, but it's just, I think we'll be okay. Okay.
Are you, are you gonna go rob Peter Day Talk? You're gonna have our funds finishing up the Danings?
We're probably already to that point, honestly, but um, hopefully, I said, we're already probably to that point, honestly, but hopefully, um, with any luck, we'll have some other one.
And you're waiting till March sixth and see if we have economic development funds.
Yeah.
Waiting till March sixth. At this point, I'm not sure it's gonna change anything on our behalf. So if that's.
I think it's just have to. Like to wait till March.
Yeah.
Fourth.
Best plan may go over into the next year, but if they can get it done, I don't know.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, do we build when it's done or build particle on then?
Wait to find that out.
Ask if we wanna do like a on the mall or not to exceed a certain dollar amount. That was kind of discussed because we do have a lot in the county, uh, the highway department.
Maybe they can send us a proposal, a formal proposal, a couple together and make sure that you guys.
Okay, so you'll be here March sixth in the morning before our meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. And as everyone know, our meeting is March sixth instead of the thirteenth because it did not get put in the paper about solar panels. And they wanna have that as quickly as possible. And um, it couldn't in February.
March sixth at ten A M. What time? Ten.
Ten A M.
Was it ten A M?
Ten A M. Cause there's.
Open. I don't know that.
So.
I can do it. So.
Makes her, it'll be at nine.
Yes, my comment for that, so the that conference. We need to talk to our county attorney. It advertised that you are not going to be in attendance at your meeting, but I don't know if the council has a resolution in place for Zoom. We did, but um, I'm being told, reach out to county attorney on this. If you know you're not gonna be there at a meeting, if you advertise it, you won't be, but you'll be attending Zoom. It's just they need to see your picture. Projected for your vote to camp. And then you have to specify that you are on Zoom during such meeting. All can. But it can be done.
I was at a meeting in the summer, fall, autumn, one year. And they had a council meeting and you vote.
When's this count? Because I was told, I was in Florida and my.
Got you. You have to have it up there.
I was on video, but it wasn't projected. They can see it.
She.
And I, yeah, and he did vote, but I don't think there's a report of their.
Okay, yeah. And that's what Kent has told us. It doesn't count, but there is a way to, so we need to reach out to him if you want that to be in place.
Yes, so do we need that?
Okay. That's all I got on those. So I guess for for nine-one discussion.
So would it be good? I'm just trying to clarify, would it be good to have representatives from Patty's group here on the sixth? So that we have everybody in the room and we're making decisions.
I'm gonna ask.
I I have one other question, and I noticed the the Ready Grant, um, there were some specific local matches that were presented to everybody. Um, specific on some of the housing and childcare and stuff like that. And did we allocate money for those local match dollars?
Our budget childcare. Now Brenda told us that Ryan Sowers was working on something, going to present to us.
Also, I think Dusty from Attica.
Yeah, Attica is too, but then then Fountain County allocate those local match funds.
Not here.
No.
I don't think you got the twenty-seven thousand. Yeah.
I'm waiting on a presentation.
Okay.
And I don't think anybody agreed with that.
So but but on behalf of the county, I don't think that we distribute those funds. I think Ready distributes it from a, we have to put money into a uh, bank account, basically, a escrow account, and then they redistribute it from there. So I'm not sure that the presentation will ever come through us. I think it will go all through.
I think the council was wanting the presentation from these individuals, so they don't know what your money is. That that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what the vote was, that we wanted to know what, somebody to present to us to know what.
So if you want to, I'll reach out to Ryan. If you wanna reach out to Dusty and see how far we move there are and um, so that we can get this going because.
What's going to another? If they're gonna be.
I think they want to see proposals first from these schools of what they have and then they'll yay or nay for twenty-seven thousand a year.
And that'll be contingent on what Ready redistributes to every town.
Well, right now, um, it's set on what they, Ready won. They've already got, they got Ready two, that there could be something else.
Right. So, yeah, I just see where the notice will change.
Okay.
That's it. Yeah.
I'm going to mention. And we're done. Yeah. Bring it. I know you had a flash, just do it. Our boy.
Well, just where we stand, what's going on between that's and Warren County.
At the commissioner's conference in December. Very rare scope with Warren County Commissioners. I don't know what their discussions were about being on their own, uh, whatever. Clay reached out to me and, you know, just he wanted a little bit of time. So we did have a letter prepared to send to Warren County Commissioners separately, but did not send it. Because I spoke with Clay and he just asked that we basically table it for a little bit. That's what we're at. Haven't really done anything.
Our our offer is still on the floor, that we don't wanna leave them without services. We're more than willing to give them services, but Fountain County will be in control of the employees. Right now, Fountain County has absolutely no say in unelected board hires and buyers. Right now Fountain County has absolutely no say in unelected board hires and fires. The unelected board doesn't get sued if something happens. Fountain County does, and I'm very much doubt Warren County would ever be involved in the lawsuit because they're Fountain County employees. So what we're saying is we are more than willing to provide you services. But Fountain County will be in charge of the employees. I don't care if they have an intimate board representation. I don't care if that board wants to interview people. Just like our normal people do, our, our ambulance and whatever. But when it comes down to where a decision can't be made by that board to come to us. And there's issues, we need the authority to say we need to help them make the decision.
But these counties that have their own separate nine-one-one, is there still a board in there?
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah, absolutely, by state statute. They, they make the daily, they run the daily operation. But when it comes and some of the boards do have the authority to hire and fire, I don't, I very doesn't agree with that at all.
Saying what the responsibilities of that board is, it just says there has to be a board.
It does specify the responsibility of the board, but the director and their employees is not responsible to the board. That's dictated by a contract.
And our contract currently states, they're doing exactly what our contract currently states.
So there's an issue in the nine-one-one center with employees. There's supposed to go to the board, it was supposed to make the recommendation as to what happens, correct?
The employees would go to director, director, report to board.
So what happens if it's the director? Who oversees?
The board, the board right now. What we're saying is to protect Fountain County, it should be.
And, and honestly, it's only a position when it needs to be. Um, it's not like that anybody else, it I'm not sure that anybody would ever meet opposed when it needs to be met. Um, I would say ninety-five percent of the time, those departments, most like highway department, it runs fine. But when there's a position that needs to be changed, it's like a highway superintendent. Now imagine us not having control over the superintendent of any standpoint, that, that's where the, that's where the issue is.
Terry, are you here?
Yeah.
I'd like, because you're on that board, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on this.
Which part?
I don't know, you know.
Not the board working.
Yes.
We, we have these meetings, you're gonna be there to discuss what's going on in dispatch, um, Catherine, this list from you know, what's going on, uh, what we looked at before, like about the, something like that. I mean, as far as firing, we can't, it's not our job to fire or hire, it's a recommendation.
No, in current contract, it's you guys.
We're, I don't think that, that should be.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we should be able to make the recommendation.
Yes.
Maybe you make the recommendation too, if you change shit.
That's in the. Well, the commissioners are actually in charge of the I would go here. I, I mean, when Rusty was president, I don't know, and I can't, you know, I can't.
So Rusty, would, would you have reported that to your commissioners?
Or he doesn't have to right now.
No, back when he was on, oh, he was never on.
No, he was, they didn't have to, they could have our covered.
Okay.
That was.
Then they are the policies you state that the commissioners are with employees, correct?
The handbook says so, but.
It mandates that the hiring, firing is the board's responsibility.
And I'm, am I understanding correctly that this contract, it's from two thousand and fourteen?
Yeah, I think that's gonna sign, it's like everything else, let, let's hear Rusty's.
So, so we gotta, I, I was just wanting to share, I just recently retired, I was on twenty-eight years, I'm now a member of the county council, so we're here kinda as a representative of the council just to listen. I can tell you over the, the last twenty-eight years that I used this service and been a part of this board, I chaired that board many, many years. It's always worked well with the hiring and firing employees and the disciplinary stuff that's going on. The commissioners say they're not representative, they have a representative on the board, they appoint other representatives. Board is mainly that, like, officials in the department has that use the service. People that actually use the service daily are the ones that supervise the employees in the center, mainly the, the dispatch supervisor. So if we have an issue, we can go directly to the supervisor and give it addressed. The, the issue I think Fountain County has with changing that dynamic, that's worked perfectly for the last thirty-plus years, by the way. Now all of a sudden it's not called work. And then the idea that it's liability issue, that only Fountain County would get sued if something happened is ridiculous. The name of the center is Fountain Warren Region Dispatch Center. Do you think any lawyer is gonna sue Fountain County and forget Warren County's part of that?
That's right.
That's ridiculous to think they wouldn't sue both counties. One of my employees, I'll give you a great example of this, one of my employees took down a man and he got injured at a, at a dispute. My employee did the best job you could ever ask for. Terry's probably aware of the situation, spent forty-five minutes trying to talk this man down. He strips his shirt off, rushes my guy, he takes him down to the ground, puts his hand, got injured, sued Warren County. Also sued the city of Agate and the city of Williamsburg because their police officers were standing there. And that suit included all three places and all three places paid in, even though my guy did a great job, the lawyer said, you know, just settle it and you pay this money. So to think that's the excuse why you wanna have control over every employee there, I think is wrong. The disciplinary issues we've had with the director have always been addressed. Commissioners in Fountain County come to those meetings, I've never heard their representative say our, our dispatch supervisor sucks. We need to make a change. Terry brought some issues to the board at a meeting we had, I think, October, November. Legitimate issues that they thought weren't being addressed. Turns out they have been being addressed. That employee been counseled, had been suspended. And ultimately they wound up getting fired because it was a recurring issue and, and it was being taken care of. But we brought to the board and we discussed it and it, and it worked. So the issue with changing, we're not checking, we're not, Warren County's not suggesting we change the makeup of the board. Representation will be the same. The only thing they're taking issue with and the only thing that is causing this decision to terminate our agreement. I, I've been sitting here for the last two hours, listening to you guys wrestle papers, trying to figure out how you're gonna pay this, how you're gonna pay that. And now we're talking about separating the dispatch center, that's worked perfectly for thirty years, that both counties are paying them. We've got a relationship that at the state level, look at us and say, that's the way everybody ought to be doing. When I went to PSAP hearings at the state house, where they were talking about limiting the number of PSAPs you can have in county. They named Warren County County, said those guys are doing great. Everyone else should be doing like that. And now we're gonna piss all that away because we have a dispute over whether or not the commissioners can come in and say, I'm like that person, like that person, like the one they're at. And that's what boils down to, it's all about control. And I think it's wrong. It's detrimental to public safety that we're talking about splitting this up. If something's worked perfectly for thirty-something years. It's a detriment to public safety. And that's what nobody's considering. And it'll also be a great expense that both counties have.
Thousand is definitely, you're gonna have your own, we're gonna have our own, like the other nineties counties and states in there.
Because the process of doing that, we can't fund one center right now. How do you think we're gonna find employees to fund two centers? It'll be detrimental to split that up when the service is working perfect. We don't have problems with the service.
So I will take you guys at our last, and I will, and Kathleen, actually, you're all up here.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
So with her, we've actually talked about you, this, uh, champs. They don't have to have their own, we do have our own. But they just still operate in the same configuration, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, I don't know if that would help. You know, adversity, how many. And we, we were double, okay, so Fountain County, so.
What would be the benefit of two of our channels?
So, here we're all back, I did move all night. Two. Definitely, one more guy, one top guy. That will be the decision on this. So our guy asked him to stay up radio because he had something going on. And we, New York County, after we, our guy cleared, we're back, get back on our zip code, like you can break him now. Now I don't have time for that stuff tonight. And we, those guys need to work together too, because we go there, they move there. At the end of the day, though, I think that with her call volume, we, we least need to look at you in the channel. Now, to go about that, I don't know how. It's not my forte.
So basically you're saying if it's not police-related chatter, then go to your own channel.
Right.
Do your own discussions.
Well, no, we, we already have that, but they have their main, so it's twenty-three, six dispatch.
Right.
So I mean, they come on, we're on, same channel.
So Warren County can take their calls on their.
They're all here theirs.
Right, so we can still scan it. You know, I understand the money aspect of it, is what you guys are, are really looking at. All together, though, we should be looking at the whole thing of seeking security. Both counters, I mean, I'm not just saying, you know, Fountain County's important, I'm not saying Warren County's important, I'm saying both counties are important. The guys that are looking at the rooms are important, EMS, fire. So fire has its own channel. EMS has its own channel. You know, so, so we, we actually use that more. Yeah, we all, we all have, and Rusty, that's why this, we, I have ours, they have ours. So there's.
In that part, it's always been an issue with officers. Change.
That's the personality that we're having a conversation with.
It's, it's with any, this, this one, I just can't figure out what to deal with. Probably a little too relaxed when, when taking care of that, but um, the, the further issue, I mean, the, the big, the big boils down to with this agreement, if anything, Warren County has a problem with is giving up any say in control of this. If you take away this aspect of having a board, take away the board, there's no reason to have. If the board doesn't have any supervisory responsibilities over dispatch, if the board doesn't make any decisions as a group about who's gonna sit in that chair and why they're sitting in that chair and have the ability to discipline that person when they're, when they're screwing up, or have the ability to say about that employee. That's not a job that commissioners are trained, knowledgeable about, or have any, have any responsibility, in my opinion. It should be the people that are actually using the service and understand the service, that know what the hell's going on in there. Those are the people, and I, I beg you, why not find a, a public service person that uses that service that would disagree with what I'm saying? It would be very few if you can find that one. I don't think Terry disagrees with those.
Now, how about some stuff to go to your account? To find out how they, they work, okay?
That's the, the difference, I'm not gonna cut you off, the difference there is, you got one county operating system. We're, we got ten people now, seven and three, seven and three of them that all have to work together. And to ask Warren County just to give up any control they have over anything and just write a line check is.
So what, who sits on that board? Is the mayor, um, the councilman, commissioners, the sheriff. Like, I just called to find out how they do the meeting and stuff like that, and he said he had a part of it, there's a headache. I'm going, okay, so who does all the firing? And he was telling me, so the mayor probably handles the city part. And then the council and the commissioners handle the county part. So, you know, I don't know. If that's something you guys want to look at, I don't know.
So on my behalf, I'm, I don't sit on that board, I don't participate in any of those meetings. The only insight that I have is coming from Barry. And Barry, you know, Barry said there are multiple counties that do it both ways, I mean, but he said most of the time the commissioners' council has that final say on just the employee part, no, nothing of day-to-day operation, that's all based off of that, of the United One Board. That's mandated that part, but just employee aspect. And I, and I think Barry keeps saying like, this is the way it should be. That's why everybody on this side is getting so avid about it. I do understand Warren County's side of wanting to say, I can't say I don't disagree with that. I, I see their aspect of it, so.
And I can't, I can see that they don't, we're paying a third of an operation. And paying a hundred percent's gonna be really bad, you know?
So let me ask this question. On this board, are they all voting members? So if they all vote to hire or let go?
Yes.
Maybe that needs to change that only the so, let me, let me, let me finish, I'm sorry. So maybe it ought to be that the policing people that are on that board should be the voting members of the director or the, the director, because you're ultimately taking care of your employees, correct? When it comes to hiring and letting go? Okay, so.
So the last proposal that Warren County sent over actually included just what you're saying. They, they carved out, yes, you have the board, then they carved out a subcommittee only for the purpose of hiring and firing the director, that consisted of two, one or two county commissioners, one Warren County Commissioner and both sheriffs. That subcommittee, that, then didn't make the decision to, to whether or not the director gets hired. And that's, that's the committee, like, the board would recommend to the committee. These are the things we think are qualified for that position, and then that subcommittee is the one that does the hiring and firing. Took away all members and did everything against elected officials, like they're saying. Put it in the hands of the elected officials to make that decision. That was the last concession that Warren County made. I don't think they're willing to go any further on that issue, but but it still gives the majority of the votes. The board has the majority of Fountain County. And that subcommittee has the majority of Fountain County, and I thought that was a very reasonable offering, and we're still at a point where we're drafting letters, wanna shut up, or say no, we think we're so.
I, and I'm not gonna tell you guys how to do your job, but if I was sitting on that side, the first thing I would do, and I know all of your feelings on it, but for me, the first thing I would do was look at that contract. That is an outdated contract from two thousand and fourteen. Times have changed. People have changed. Um, and that's where I would start if it was me, and I know you guys may have already done that, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, to move the center, we have to. I think that one specific location.
Right, and I, I think I read through some of that, and there was the joint meeting over Warren County, I was just a spectator, but I think I read through that and listened.
On a mutual playing field, the projected proposal that was sent over in my mind is more manageable. It, it's a little bit of a headache because it's a board on top of the board, but it's well represented, I will say that um, from elected standpoint. Um, and, and ideally that board doesn't ever meet unless there's an issue, or maybe each once a year to renew contracts, much like the commissioners do now to renew you know, supervisors, et cetera, or heads, I should say. So that's my, and that, the, the projected proposal is much more inviting than the original.
So the, the projected is five people that do the hiring and three of them will be Fountain, two will be Warren?
Three, three to two.
Right, so what's objection to that? Well. Cause you're gonna have control. Two commissioners are gonna be on that, they're hiring.
Uh, it's discussed, it's like, she really wanna have a board or a board?
Well, but.
Yes, the board within a.
Chair, chair, do, do you think the, the two counties function well together as a bi-county dispatch center? Or do you think we would be more efficient as a singular Fountain County, um, dispatch center? Oh, yeah, yeah, of course, yes, of course, yeah, garden absolutely.
You know, I think, and then, I'm sorry, there's always still this money aspect. I get that. You know. That's why I said something about the two dispatch channels. You know, trying to see what you're saying, but. Ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, I can say my piece all day long. That it comes down to, it's the commissioner's choice, I don't have. Yeah, they say we're all split. That's it, you know, I'm not a major person on that. Does both our counties work doing good? Yeah, it is, as I said, they, our guys back, their guys, their guys back. Our guys, you know. That's where I don't know about the two, just that the chicken wants to get in, I don't know, it surely will scan it, our guys will. But at the end of the day. I also want to make sure that you guys are saying.
Right, I think the ultimate goal for the county and, and Warren County is safety of its citizens.
Right.
And the ability to get along like we do, so we can continue to do our jobs. So that.
Will agree with. The commissioners. This one third crap, it needs to be bumped up. The times, the times have changed.
So we need to revisit, because it was based on that issue.
Let's look at. You know, the, the center itself. I mean, we want the state of the art stuff, and we don't want the rules.
Like, the equipment, if you can leave?
I think it was. Fifty-fifties in the process. So. We're stuck. We're not the. What stuff's that?
Well, we talked about, when we moved, when we did, like a quarter, we're going to get all, everything. But, and we also had, and we had a joint meeting.
I don't think so, Dan, I thought Barry said our meeting was fine.
Oh, I thought he said he was.
Talk about moving it, got quiet, and so, asking them first. That's some of the stuff that's going on too, it's like, you know, the, the permission. Why didn't you ask first, before you decided, you know, the building came out? It was discussed amongst all of us, you know, like, what, what would be ideal for ninety-one, because they should have never been put in that little closet near the courthouse.
I agree. Well, we talked, when we had the joint meeting up, up there, we talked about. Uh, Warren County, they wouldn't have to, we, we talked first about them paying part of the, the work to do it, or else. We paid, they would pay rent, and, and they agreed to that, that they would pay additional money, and maybe they'll agree that with this. By member board. Maybe increase the fifty, I don't know, they're interested in fifty-fifty on that expenses. I think I, I looked, and I think our share is about a hundred eighty-seven thousand a year. On nine-one-one, so that means Warren County's paying. Ninety thousand, so two-seventy, I mean. That's hundred thirty-five, so ninety compared to hundred thirty-five, right? We had an agreement to.
I think the proposal they sent over actually put a dollar amount in here, like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-seventy-five or something, so Warren County didn't go on the bank. It, we went away from the two-thirds, one-third, just put a number.
Okay, what about the government, would just be Fountain County, and that's when, um. We got the flag.
Well, and I don't, I, I think we talked about the, a dollar amount, I, I wasn't. Wasn't happy about that, because it said, you can have medical bills that we don't know what's going to come up, and I, I don't. I don't, I think it's still, it'd either be two-thirds, one-third, half-half, I, I don't think we should set a dollar amount.
I know. Terry, and I thought it should be fifty-fifty. This four, sentencing, uh, bookkeeping, you don't have, what did we bill them about fifty percent, or was it a third? You know, so there were some things that were provided.
Yeah, and there's a lot of work on the office office that divided out, but.
And, and that's the avenue ongoing, I'm looking at the plan, because I've been there, I've done that.
Just, you said that board only needs to, doesn't need often, or the order, like, so they don't review the receipts, or how many things to buy, or the board doesn't, something like that.
I'd love to hear what Garf has to say.
We think our has been only issues that.
You look at, I think, overall, there are, there are people, overall, that should. Both counties work well together, you know, um, we look at the fire service, in fire departments, we look at, we do a lot of inventory, that's what we count. EMS, you know, we do a lot of, EMS has separate channels, fire does not. We're all on the same channel, but we do have fire contractors, and it's the dog. My biggest concern would be. Working, you know, going into my side, this is my concern, and we, you know, we do a lot, we do mutually, going into Maine County. A lot of times, the radio traffic with wellness gets lost. Because we're suits separate. Despite there, you know, um. And it gets a little challenging, you know, we do the lead one, I don't know a lot of. Our accidents, unfortunately, out of the deep house area. The radio traffic gets a little hectic there, because Maine County's dispatch, I need the best dispatch center, and it, it gets a little crazy. Yeah, and you know, that would be my, my concern, would be that. It would be the communication, I think, the other thing, right, to do, I. Is, if you split. My mind, my mindset is, you're going to have to have eight employees here. You know, at least eight to ten, and then same thing with Barry, I can tell you, my position as the director, I could find a master of, um. Paramedic for seven months. I can't get, I find, maybe a lot of five, find a paramedic. To fill that spot, I know what it is, it's hard to find employees in the world, and I. I would be afraid that's what we might get into. And start everybody to get the board as well. Oh, that's like three out, and so I also understand who look, that it's, you know, raining that with hope. Opened, you know, the, the, the splitting, and the billing, and this and all that, and so I know it's happening in the nine-one.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Well, I was going to throw one thing out there, that, I mean, I think it would be worth looking at some sort of negotiation, it doesn't mean it's for ten years. You try something, we split, we're not going back into you.
So.
So trying something makes a lot of sense.
I think it's going to be for both counties, um, and it may actually be less expensive for them, talking over, I'm not sure, but. Let's run some numbers on percentage-wise, based on a percentage, um, whatever you guys come up with, that's not my place to say who does what in percentage. Fifty-fifty has been proposed by both the sheriff, um, up here, if we want to run some of those numbers, and, and keep the projected. The, the committees, as they projected them and revised in a local agreement. I'm okay with that. Keep, keep the hiring firing to elected, elected officials, they still keep their own board, there'll be two boards. Ideally, the, the sub-board doesn't meet, but once a year, and then there'll be a percentage-based. Payment, opposed to a set contract payment. And everybody okay with that proceeding? It's.
Yeah, if we went fifty-fifty and did that more.
Nearly.
Nearly.
How long did you guys review other ones? I mean, never, I mean.
Warren County Council.
It speaks to the entire council, because that question hasn't been posed to us yet. Somebody wants to come up with a proposal. I, you know, I don't think commissioners have heard anything back. About whether or not. We want to negotiate more on this agreement that we sent back the last time, and I, and I think there was a typo in that agreement. That the members of the board might have changed to the one member appointed by Fountain County, I think inadvertently got. Said one, that we believe in the same, certainly that was a typo by his lawyer, um, but. That, that question hasn't been posed, and it's certainly, it certainly would be worth discussing, if the, if the alternative is. Take the ball and go home, we're going to do it ourselves, you guys are on your. That's a discussion that needs to be had, probably a negotiation between the two councils to figure out if that is appropriate, I know the two-thirds, one-thirds has always been based upon. Population, the number of units that we have. In both counties, the number of fire departments, the number of radios, the number of calls for service, it's, it's not seventy-third, I mean, it's, it's not two-thirds, one-third now, the, the majority of all the calls. Majority of the numbers of people that are serviced is, is heavily weighted toward Fountain County, so that's where the. Say that again?
You guys, look at this guy. We separated, one guy went on his own.
We take it there's eighteen months, correct?
No, we, no, Barry said, at, very well, on notice. December, January. The January one of that year, it would be on. Okay, so what, so this day costs, so what we revisit?
Well, well, let's work, let's just try to do the fifty-fifty thing, or work with that.
Yeah, we do it every year, we do it every year.
Well, I, I was given a hundred eighty-seven thousand, which are here, so that would be ninety.
It's not just the county general and the statewide, you know, the health insurance fund.
So if you want to talk to Clay, I'll be glad to contact Ethan, because I know Ethan very well, he's president of Warren County Council, see where. Where, uh, council stands as they would be to that agreement, and.
And maybe look at the last five years, see what they've expended, they projected a two-seventy-five, two-seventy-five was a new. Projection over.
So if you did the fifty-fifty, now we would have to restrict what our board, obviously, to.
No, wouldn't we?
I don't think that's necessary, you're going to agree to have board, have board, and the board.
Then you would have fifty-fifty more representation.
The whole subcommittee thing was just, let's throw something at the wall and see if it'll stick, I can tell you, in all the meetings we've sat in that board, it's never come up. Fountain County, Warren, and we, all of us around that board, around that table, we're all there for one purpose, and we've always worked well together. It's not necessary to do that other little sub-board, but if, if that makes you happy, where now it's all elected officials, then great, let's do that.
Yeah, it's a board, in my opinion, or nothing, so.
Hey, Tim, um, you made a comment on all Fountain County. And totally is right now, but there's no reason why a county could remove a couple of people. That there would be some sports and finance, or a county person working there.
Oh, no.
It's not all.
Yeah, yeah, we do, they have.
Same county, where, how, Indiana, where. They want to work.
Yeah, we, we do the payroll, and they reimburse us.
It's just like the other part used to be, we done the paper.
Yeah, okay, so we said on that, you're going to talk to Clay, and I'll talk to Ethan, and then we can. Discuss and, and. We're on, down here, you've got, kind of. With the commissioners at nine AM, is that, are we meeting with them at nine on? The sixth?
Well, this, this is, we could finish this.
They can hit it first up, and then, or do you want to?
I watch six, is that where you come up?
Yes.
That is, that is supposed to be ten, I'm sorry. I'm so.
We can discuss. Your schedule to play, and all next schedule will be. We think we got lots.
This has been a good discussion. We need to keep this in mind and do more.
Just like to put it out there, I'd like to someday have an ambulance in government. We, we would help fund it, we would help, I mean, we would help house it here. Um, have housing, or any paramedics, I talked to Garth about. Traveling too.
Yeah, well, you know, that, that's, that's a bad part, that's a problem, but most, a lot of their calls come this way, we have a nursing home. And we have a assisted living. And, you know, sex in the city, so a lot of them come this way, so. It's keep it in mind. We, whoever, whoever's seeing you good, I would definitely help.
Yeah, now, that's it.
Same as we're all back. I'm okay.
Ready, Morgan? Okay, first of all, let's, I want to do, since Jeff's can't be here on the sixth. Prove the resolution and it was given to us at one point, but I don't think we're even voting on it, that a council member who isn't here can vote by on Zoom. And then we count it. So is there a motion to approve that resolution? Is there a second? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll probably have to sign that resolution at the next meeting, but once they find it, but we did have a resolution on the night of the September. You have left it unseen.
Pointing to Brandon, yes. She said a picture of the.
She can get this straight up and make sure. Okay, so now let's get, does everyone had a chance to look over the minutes from the January ninth meeting?
Is there any, uh, business in progress? I have a question. What, what resolution signed by council that day? Were, when I got it by email, appeared to be the same as.
Uh, the only thing we voted on was about that Warren County voted that they didn't want to split the nine one line.
Talking about our minutes from last week. Yeah, yeah, okay. I, I apologize about the utilization area resolution.
That was the.
Yeah, we, you were still here when.
Yeah, right. But I, through the minutes I got in the mail, it was, it looks like the signatures were on the original resolution and it did not leave.
The, no, I changed the language and it was only to the first page. And that, that third paragraph, like I said in the email, had been changed and it took out what, I guess I put in what the attorney had suggested. And send it to you guys after it was corrected because it was on contingent of the language being.
Signatures on the original resolution, maybe on statements.
When's the original coverage is what he's, he's worried if the signatures were on the original coverage.
I, I, I've been looking for. Oh, I had that to the. Right at all.
Yes. I, you've been resigning, yeah, I mean.
I, I, maybe, maybe I didn't read it. It just looked.
Yeah, it was, it, the only paragraph that changed was paragraph three and it took out the undesirable, you know, and changed it to.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes? And Tom, Jeff's second. All of them in favor? Okay, review and acknowledge pressures banker reconciliation and lumped reimbursement quarter funds for January twenty twenty three. There are motions for the knowledge serves. Jim, second. I don't have to say June lead and. Okay, all those in favor? Reporter collections is submitted for December for the ambulance clerk, health department reporter and sheriff. A motion to acknowledge those. Dale, second. Kelly, all those in favor? Review and acknowledge. Oh, let's see. Was different?
Yes, it's a monthly report.
Okay, it's a monthly report for the clerk's office for December twenty twenty two. So a motion to acknowledge that.
Hello.
Um, second. Kelly, all of us in favor?
Our report goes to the state.
Okay, commissary report presented by the sheriff. Is there a motion to acknowledge that for July first, twenty twenty two, December thirty first, twenty twenty two period? Kelly, second. Jeff, all those in favor? Conferences, twenty twenty two budget for twenty twenty three, spare from utilities, six thousand eight hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty six cents. Cover ability invoices from December. So a motion to cover those. Kelly, second. Denise, all those in favor? Our public safety sheriff's requesting to cover eleven thousand five hundred and sixty five dollars and fifty two cents from line item. Eleven seventy oh five, twenty two oh three oh for multiple invoices for gas, cars and loot. So a motion to cover those. And Kelly, second. All those in favor? Renters are requesting to cover one hundred and twenty one thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars to cover the closeout cost of the C C M G twenty two oh two.
That's community across the ground.
Okay, we had this money appropriated in commissioners' budget in twenty twenty two. We need to pay back the grant portion that was unused. And that said, all money was expended from the grant and so, so we are spending it all in.
Well, what happened was, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, the project they didn't do, all of they had proposed to do. So out of proportion of the grant that we got for that specific part of the thing was spent out of the fund that I put the grant money into. And we use our match out of that same fund. So therefore we overspent money. That should have been left in there for the unused grant. And here's Jason's paperwork, I think I sent to you. I don't know.
Is there a motion to, uh, to cover those funds? Kelly, is there a second? So you did.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all going in favor?
For this upcoming year, where we want to have a certain line item, we'll keep it, just in case we have an under running in like this.
I want to hear what Brandon suggested, but I want to talk to State Department more because they are very particular. They're on mixing funds with grant money. So until I get a word from State Department accounts, it'll continue like it has.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
This is my, my problem that's on the line, not hers.
Transfer county general circuit court from capital outlay to extra quarter, twelve thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars and sixty cents. A motion for that. Jeff, is there a second? Denise, all those in favor? Uh, N V H maintenance repair from salt to gravel, eight hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty cents. A motion to have that. Kelly, um, second. Um, I don't know. Did you send everybody the email about the transferring money into rainy day? So what was about eighty six thousand?
Eighty seven.
Okay, so, you know, in the past, we've always. Whatever's left in county general that has been spent, ten percent went into rainy day. And then last year or year before, they, the state is allowing us for maybe three or four.
Thirty percent now.
To fifteen, so twenty point four, fifteen percent. And previous council, we did vote to do the fifteen percent. So, uh, we did transfer eighty six thousand in, into rainy day. It's down to about what, seven hundred and seventy. I like to keep rainy day at a million dollars just because. Um, when the commissioners close landfill, I don't know how familiar you are with that and that's been several years ago. And the state required the commissioners to set up a special fund of a million dollars to cover any costs until, when is it, when, what year can we close it? Maybe?
Twenty twenty eight and we're one point seven.
Yeah, oh, one point seven, okay. So commissioners did not do it, council did not do it. And so I've always tried to keep a million dollars in rainy day to cover because if something goes wrong at the landfill, we have to pay it until.
And I'm not thinking that, uh, just so you guys know, one thing, because we don't have that amount in there in a specific account, Colleen has to, I think it's yearly or every other year, she has to do a financial report. To show that this county is viable and has the funds in the amount of a.
And it's, it's the cost of what, about eighty thousand? What do we spend up there a year?
Yeah, I spend a fair chunk to, to get it, to do the repairs to get it for our, our website.
Okay, but, uh, we, we, we've covered it all, but I've always did like rainy day, but we had to spend. Uh, one year we had, I think, three or four police cars and an ambulance. And so we had to take money out of rainy day and, yeah. So it has dropped down, but I would like to get that back until maybe then, so we can get clearance on the landfill and not have to worry about that. But I don't think twenty twenty eight is probably going to be the day, but it's also more later. I think somewhere around eighty six thousand. Yeah, okay, so, um. Jason? We're ready for department yes. I don't know if you heard what we talked about on this salt mine. I know you need it because we're, we're wasting a lot. But I know someday down the road, you gotta have a, that, that building's going to be after twice. And are we going to replace it there or, you know? Put out there like the jail and where we've got land, I, I don't know what, and that's where a plan is going to help. But then you get by without a salt barn until we get a plan. I don't know. That's, I guess what you're here to talk to.
How long is the plan you want to take?
Well, it's certainly take a year then.
We've gone, we've gone without salt mines for ever. We've never had one. Um, I did put a little additional cost in the handouts I gave you guys. I did have three bids, one from Rob Industries. Uh, one from Clearspan and one from Greystone. Those were all of the threshold that. It has said we, we leave the, they go on everything. The one from Clearspan, I forgot to put in there. It does not have. This is what we're calling an off the shelf building. So we would provide what they have, uh, building blocks on, if you haven't seen them. Upper ready decks and attic are just the big concrete blocks. We would have to buy those as well. So that needs to be included in that price. I have reached out to the ready decks. No, I'm not yet. So that price would be included as well.
So you're losing forty percent of your salt, a hundred and twenty tons a year. And that's ten thousand eight hundred dollars a year. You're losing it salt. I know it's something you really need out there, but. Is there room out there to put that? And is there room if we build it at some point down the road, then we have to build a new highway department? Is there going to be room there or is it something that needs to go out?
I don't, I don't know where the discussions have been with the actual new garage. I know they were talking about putting it between our stock pile yard and the ambulance. In that, in that area right there. At one time I know they were talking about putting it on the east side of the sheriff's department. At one time, so I really don't know where it's going to be. We're planning on using the current garage as a cold storage once we do get something in the works. Myself, although Travis may feel the same way, I would much rather have a new garage and work towards that than salt at this time. We, we just got some concerns over the garage that.
You know, I, I, I know it's got to be replaced.
Yeah, I'm just happy we're having, actually having a discussion to. So with that being said, I mean. Thankfully this year we have lost a whole lot of sand and salt because of the weather. We haven't used a whole lot of salt because of the weather. Um, so that's what we've got on our product for next year that we're not to order. Let's see that we're not to order three hundred and ten tons of salt next year.
When will you get your salt for next year in?
We generally get that in October.
So we have a, well, we're not going to have a, not being as planned by then, but hey, you bet. What's everyone else's thoughts on that?
I would rather see the highway garage versus the salt barn. And one thing else we've got to think about too, are we going to have to have a building for that?
And one thing else we gotta think about too, are we gonna have to have a building for that two-state surrender for the sheriff's department?
That one brought up, and.
Yeah.
Somebody told me half a million dollars.
Yeah. Seventy-six.
Yeah, I, I've been doing a lot, a little bit of labor on that for it, um, and I looked at, kind of had something similar down here, behind the old jail for that reason. And, uh, Brad said it's about two hundred and maybe thirty-five or forty thousand, but it's gonna get this back in in a year or two.
And they, they, they made all, they, the city themselves made a lot of stuff, that was just gonna be you now.
No, I, he said it was sort of cement and building, oh, did he, yeah, when he was with us, when we had, yeah. But it just seems like a lot of money, and I, I kind of was hoping Roger would stay and explain it to us.
And I, he must have. Yeah, he did, yeah.
Did he say anything to you about it?
It, it only just, the conversation that we've had about it, but only. No, no, I had.
We mentioned in the last commission, BJ said the one in Rockville, and it was around five seventy-five.
Correct.
Same thing.
Yeah.
It's, well, I mean, I, I hate it, but we gotta have a different. But we can use the lit money, I think that means we're going last year, probably getting the jail payout, but, um, we won't have to use our county general or anything, I, that that money, that lit money can be used for that, because it is for jail buildings, so.
I just, I just looked at all, all that was entailed and talked to a couple of people in the, in the sanitation part of, that I know. And it just, it just seemed very hot. Oh, it, it probably, um, and it's like, yeah. And it's not, it, it would be.
It's, it's, the equipment we're talking about.
And there's a little, there's maybe a little scope out, but they're gonna go east across the Blacktop to where the sod is, the edge of the Blacktop parking lot. Put that building in there in the, in the machine. And, uh, and then take the, take the, one more, and cross Caddie Corner, again, I think it has to go through Blacktop and then over to the Central Suits one. It, it, it just separate what it basically, but I, I want to back up, they do have something in, in underground, it's, it's like a bunch of office. And once it, once it comes in there, it's supposed to grind it all, it's standing on there, it's not good. It's, it's, Terry, Terry wondered if it wasn't too high off of any of them and just get through.
Maybe we need to have a lot more people look at that before we make any decision.
I know they're, suppose they did meet, and tell them we can do something, you know, we haven't did.
It has to be a two-stage process, and then one I have to.
Yes. Maybe then March sixth, they'll tell us more about it, then, I mean.
Yeah, it's just on the agenda, just bring it up.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Put that on the agenda. We're not gonna cut into your time here, but, um, you know, I, let's, let's just hold off a little bit and see. Um, talk about, let's talk about maybe next March sixth, the commissioner could be here too, so we can talk to them about how long down the road they're thinking that the highway department's gonna need to be replaced and. See what we're gonna do about February four.
I would like to go up to White County, they built a new building up there, it's very nice, uh, if I can count it, done some updates, I guess, we're gonna take a couple of road trips and fill with some other county hardware, and see. Um, the other thing I give to you is just kind of, uh, projected was what we're gonna be trying to get done this year, so if you have any questions on that, I'm putting that in.
Uh, so salt mine, no, are you looking at out there where you store all the, um, forty lions?
Okay, in the northwest corner.
Okay, and, and then that would be, because I would say when we go new highway, I think it probably needs to go out there, and there, there's not much. I don't think there's enough land anyway. Where you're at now, you'd have to tear down the buildings, you'd unbuild, and you don't have, you, you'd have no building, so, okay. And then, I don't know if the county would sell that ground where you're at now, or looking.
We're, we're allowing full storage.
Okay.
So we're not having everything held outside, we can, we can work with this.
Awesome, that's a good idea, to do files and stuff and something, okay. Anything else?
We'll just.
If those, you can copy the estimates, because we'll have.
Um, if you guys have a moment, we'll head back.
They're showing, okay, you know, thanks for having me here a long time, so, Susan, you have anything, I know. Got money invested, well?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I have.
We sent out the development letters to the taxpayers in Daniel, where they were like, a little over seven hundred fifty thousand of the development fees, we collected a little over four hundred. The straight suppression area. Looking good.
How are we doing on timeframe on the tax statements, or we're gonna?
March thirtieth is another wow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Barry, you wanna go first? Boy, we get three new council members, and we've had two longest meetings.
So I was coming around to you, just a few things, I got on my agenda, uh, this is a breakdown of our run total run numbers for the last five years, um, and show you what, uh, where we progressed, I guess you wanna say, uh, starting out two thousand eighteen, we had a little over twenty-four hundred runs. You could just see how we progressed down, and we finished out last year at twenty twenty-two, uh, three thousand fourteen rounds. Just the average, that's just based off of three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, we went from a little, a little under seven rounds to over eight rounds a day, and that's pretty true to the case. Uh, I will say that the, the little bit of the difference is, is, uh, we are taking patients longer distance than what we were five years ago, ten years ago, twenty years ago when I started. Um, we don't take a lot to Williamsport like we used to, um, uh, we take them a lot of times, you know, we take Lafayette, Champaign, Terre Haute. Um, and a lot of that is, is, because they are not able to, I guess, handle that, they send them to a more high-acuity, like the Lafayette area, Champaign area, and so unfortunately, that adds time, but just two, two and a half hours on turnaround time, so. Uh, collections? You said about going to Champaign, if they ever got the agreement worked out where you go pick up over in Illinois, and we've been working on that, but unfortunately, can't get the Illinois answers back. Or originates over there and comes back, uh, she reached out again, and they just, they will not respond back.
That wall's pretty high.
Uh, collections, uh, we were down twenty twenty-two, uh, we weren't where we were in twenty twenty-one. We finished just around seven hundred and ten thousand, which was down from the year before, I think we were at nine hundred or a whole less than nine hundred thousand. Uh, a lot of it, uh, because we've been so busy, but I also would say, uh, looking at November, December, uh, between Jeff and, um, Ca- uh, Carrie, Carrie was sick, uh, how about family, family members sick, Jeff was sick. You know, we brought Jeff in to do a lot of the work, he has been doing the work, he's been doing above and beyond the work, but at the end of the day, he's had to go out of the office to build staff and ambulance because of lack of staff, which that takes away from helping carry. Uh, when they don't well help carry, then you don't get the billing out and get paid, but I will say, you're January, February, we're worried regarding on people billing out and picking that up, so, but, um, I will tell you alone with that, that insurer program that we looked at is working out very well, uh, I talked to her the other day, I think she put in uh, ten or fifteen mains in, uh, and she got a hundred percent return back on that. That program's working out very well, so I'm glad that we went with that program, so. Um, positive, I would say, a little bit, uh, it helps a little bit, uh, as you may or may not know, uh, we get a portion of money from Medicaid. Uh, about ten years ago, they came in and, uh, federal government, we here wrote accidentally on rules, regulations, that there's a little extra money available. Uh, it's called Medicaid reimbursement money, we get, I filed paperwork with a law firm. Um, and they file this with Medicaid, they base off of how much we bill Medicaid, how much we receive, then we get an additional amount. Uh, and the, for twenty twenty, I just got a notification, we're gonna end up getting six thousand forty-five dollars for that. Um, doesn't sound like much when we originally started, when we were in the twenties, but this money is geared around traditional Medicaid, so you have traditional Medicaid, and then you have, uh, the, the other type of Medicaid, which is state-paid, um, they've kicked a lot of, uh, individuals out of the traditional Medicaid, put them on the state, unfortunately, can't collect off of that at this point. You can only collect off that traditional, so the dollar amount come down, we get a certain percentage of that, that's what that six thousand dollars is, so. Uh, most organizations have somebody hired to do it, costs thirty, they'll take thirty to forty percent of your earnings, so I thought, there's no reason why I can't sit and do it, or with Jason Fisher from Benton County, so that's been done in-house, we're not having that kind you know, contracted out, so, um, new ambulances, I just sent him a text this morning, no news on those yet, I know back in December, they were starting to release chassis, but I think we're far enough down on the line that no news has been heard on the, the new ambulances, so I'm pretty sure it's probably gonna be still next year, but. Staffing, um, we're kind of in a little predicament right now, I have two individuals out on F M L A. I got one out on workman's comp. Um, as of last week, I had a vacant paramedic spot open, but I had two individuals show interest in wanting to do that, so we're doing interviews right now. I'm hoping to have that filled the next couple of weeks, that'll help a little bit, but we've hit, we've taken a pretty good hit on my vacation sick, uh, making sure that our trucker staff and on top of, you know, and that's even what Jeff and I are doing coverage too, we're taking a pretty good hit on that, so. Um, trying to watch it closely as much as I can, but you know, where we're gonna be in July or August when it comes to that, so.
We should transfer some of that salary.
Yeah, we can, the paramedic, I didn't have a bill to, that'll help, I just don't know how far out that's gonna go, so just a heads up, I'll keep you updated on that. So, uh, last thing I have, uh, was able to get some pricing or got the quotes of pricing on the flooring with this patient. I got two quotes, I got one from Romers. Uh, he will remove all of the flooring that's there now, prep it, put a new flooring in. Uh, he come in at fifteen thousand five hundred. I had patents come up and look at it. Uh, same thing, he's gonna do the same thing, remove all the flooring and put new flooring down, we're gonna put the L B P down, uh, it's a, like a it's like a wood grain type of wood, uh, wood grain material. Uh, he come in, patents come in at twelve thousand nine fourteen. So my recommendation to commissioners next week is, we'll probably go with a little bit of patents, but need to discuss with you guys. What do you guys think about where you wanna move forward with this, because that'll be the question, is funding, or how do you wanna do it?
I don't know, let's see what commissioners, we're gonna meet right after them, so.
Obviously, for the next meeting?
No, on the sixth.
Okay, so just bring, I'll bring it to them, and then you guys discuss on the sixth, okay, yeah, okay, that's fine, right? The flooring in there, it, it's ten years old, it needs to be, what I was looking at, maybe split it up, maybe do a half the building. It'll be harder to match it, but a lot of, it's ten years old, we might as well just replace it all, so. That's all I have. But I got any questions?
Would you think their brain had a valid point on ambulance recovery?
Yeah, Covington grows, the way they're saying it's gonna grow. I would be concerned, obviously, you know, if I'm gonna add the sixty houses that are coming hearing, most of that's gonna bring more people here, which opened up an opportunity for more calls. Um, yeah, but I, I'm not sure it's something we need to act on now, I mean.
Let's say how much money he's gonna do this.
Well, here's where I'm at right now, is.
Yeah, seven and a half, yeah.
Here, where I'm concerned right now.
Right.
Attic area, uh, and we're talking, going back to these runs, um, so Attica only has one truck. We always, that ambulance, when I first started here twenty years ago, we took them to Williamsport, we call it the turn and burn thing, we go in there, drop them off, be right back for another call. We're not doing that now, it, we're, we're taking a lot of people to Lafayette, and it's an over a two-hour turnaround. We're getting a lot of back-to-back calls, which means we're having to pull a truck around Beatersburg, which is ten to twelve minutes. Um, this goes back to what I had given to you guys at budget hearing, I was a little proposal of of staff and a fourth ambulance, uh, running a twelve-hour day. Um, we predominantly get a lot of our runs between ten AM and ten PM in the evening, you know, in that timeframe. Uh, if we were to go with that truck, uh, that truck would be utilized as what I call an overflow truck. My thought, my, my brain thinks this way, but you know how it works, may not work that way, is when that Attica truck goes out on a call, I would move that ambulance, that fourth ambulance to Ellsworth River. Okay, they would sit there and they would wait, see what met in the Attica trucks doing, they're going to Williamsport, and stay there and wait for a call, they go Lafayette, move that truck to the station in Attica, and they would be there and ready for another call. That's what we need right now. More than what we need here as of today, or coming.
Yeah, because you can be here in eight minutes or.
I'm never gonna say never have one in Covington, just think the priority right now, serious talk, serious thing, that you guys, we need to really look at.
But is Warren County still getting all the runs for the extended area?
No, soon as, soon as Jane stepped in, that would immediately taken away.
So you're back to doing them.
The only thing that they're doing, it's a difference of opinion, used to, obviously, we take a lot, we took a lot of the, or waters, we took them to Williamsport. Once they were, you know, released from there, the Attica truck will, will pick them up and bring them back. Warren County's picking that up a little bit more, but our runs coming out of the waters going to, uh, Williamsport has dropped dramatically because they have a new doctor group in here that's out of Carmel, it's not Dr. D's anymore. It's another, so we're taking a lot of them to like the end of, uh, profits, we're not doing a lot meant to Williamsport, so we really didn't lose anything in that point, but as of the, as the auto trace, we have the nine one one, okay? That was kind of messed up deal, but soon as, when Jane came back as administrator, that was the very first thing. She called me and said, no, we're not doing that, because her concern was, is that, oh, there's a Fountain County truck setting in Attica. Why should my truck come from Williamsport all the way over there? Yeah, so we, that's, that's.
I haven't, I haven't heard of that, that result.
But I. But I. No money's tight and all that, I'm just, what I would tell you is, is to answer your question, yeah. If the sixty hour could be. Pan out. And I'd even almost look at. I wanna be, I hate, but I'd also see what that's gonna bring in too, you know, I'd need one, let's see, number four. Two, is it going to increase our run? Because here where I'm concerned a little bit. What do we do about the walls and human area, when it takes us fifteen, eighteen minutes to get down in them areas? You know, I mean. There, you'd be better for stationed down at eight hundred south and really cover your, you know. But obviously that requires expenditure there.
Staff, we're gonna be able to get staff.
To do it, to do it properly, you need six to run it, to run the ambulance, to wait, you need to run, you need six people.
And you find six people.
Good question. That's gonna be the challenge, maybe you look wherever I need to have a paramedic. So, I mean, to answer your question, Dale. Yeah, maybe, if, if it all pans out, I know I keep repeating myself, but all pans out.
I'm looking down the road, that's. And what operator?
Right, and I think, I think it needs to be something on radar, I don't, I don't think it. We honestly didn't pick the carpet up and shove it out of the car, but I think it is something we need to think about. And the other issue is, is I'm hearing, somebody had heard Atticus getting ready to expand the housing.
Yeah, they got the same amount of money.
You know, and so I'm hearing that there's housing going in there.
And there's. Probably gonna be housing.
Yeah, so, you know, to me, there, there's nothing we have to look at too, there are none. Sixty, eighty houses in, you know, in Attica area, that's. You know, the run volume there is running pretty slow, so. So.
Um, really quick, while I'm sitting there. The, and this may or may not have anything to do with you, but they're going to have a fire district meeting. For Davis Logan and Shawnee Townships, tomorrow is the first meeting. And then they'll have two more, it's gonna be for any time, I don't know if that's something that you might be interested in.
Won't really affect EMS side, it's more a fire, so what they're doing is, is they're doing what they call fire protection districts. Um, right now, from what I, the preliminary information that I'm gathering from a. Is from your townships, I think they give up like point three, three percent. And with the, you can hold me, if you go to a fire protection district, you can go up as almost, I have about one percent. So if your budget's three hundred thousand dollars, you can almost triple it. And what that does is that helps with equipment, you know, personnel. Things like that, and that's why a lot, there's a lot, are you guys still doing the fire protection district for territory? Warren County just went to territory, so their three departments went together and.
Actually, two went together and one.
Okay, there we go.
So that won't have any effect on you per se?
No, it, I mean, the only thing that it, unless they, the department decides they wanna take on EMS. You know, and, and put an ambulance in.
But most, most of the departments are non-transport.
Yeah.
So they just got the equipment to sustain until they get there.
They got a certificate to do that.
That would be the only thing, but I would think that there would be a lot of players into that before that decision was made, but otherwise, exactly what they're saying, they'd be a non-transport. So they would respond, initiate that here, if there's not an ambulance still, if one gets there to, you know, further than there.
And that's why, the, the reason we went to the territory was because of the financial status. Of needing more training, need more equipment, because most of your departments are now doing Medicaid response alongside of. The, uh, the ambulance, to, to get there to sustain and stabilize until they can get there and take over and transport it. So with those additional costs, we needed more money, and we couldn't do it by contract. So we did it away with the contract and with the territory, that takes all the funding that used to go to the townships. For safety, fire safety, that puts it into a territory pocket, and then it's divided up amongst the, the entities that are in that.
I could see in a weird spot where I live, then, cause I'm covered by West Point. Even though I'm Davis Township.
We, we, we have the same in, with like West, with West Lebanon, Wayne's Court, Pine Village, Wayne's Court went by themselves. Maybe they only had one township, and it's their department is actually run by their town. Where Pine Village and Lebanon, we've covered several, in fact, some are shared between Pine Village, Wayne's Court, and West Lebanon. Haven't been, you know, in other areas, so you have to go each of those territories, or each of those county areas. Have to be divided up, and only a certain amount will go into the territory, rest has to go to the other entity.
It takes a while, and that, I think that's gonna be a challenge, I've heard some discussion about the Davis Township area.
Yeah, we used to split and pack, have the funds went to Attica and had one to West Point, and Attica wanted all of it. Well. We're only five minutes from.
Yeah.
Wasn't with our department, and I'm fifteen minutes from Attica. So.
So we're gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is, your townships, all of your townships have to be on board. If you got one that says no.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else, guys?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Okay, Greg, your last.
Okay, uh, landfill, just to give you guys heads up on it, uh, talking to commissioners already. Uh, we've, I've got a bid from, uh, and the commissioners allowed me to award it to Darrell Bell. Uh, as you're going into the landfill, there's a great big pile, not on landfill, it's on county property. But it's a big pile of concrete, tiles, stuff like that, that's been dumped there, state county, all of them. Doping, making a pile, it's been there for a long time, it's a very sore sight, and each time, of course, the state comes out to do an inspection, they're like, what's this? You know, so we've always agreed that we need to clean that up, and we actually started on it, we're doing the landfill, we started cleaning it up. Now, they're talking about selling a chunk of property out there, the commissioners are, as you guys are aware, for solar purposes. The entrance for the new people to take ownership of that land goes right through that debris field. So, that sort of sped up my need, as far as I'm concerned, to clean that area up. So I had Darrell come out, look at it, and Roger was with me, cause he puts the parameters of what needs to be done. Uh, and this is all just stuff that's dumped on top of the ground, nothing's been dug out and put in, it's on top of the ground, and it's piles. And had trees, some trees are over and up there now, cause he's already started, but some trees are almost two foot diameter. But anyway, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars is what it's gonna cost us. Uh, that's the bid, and what he'll do is take all the trees out, dispose of the trees. Take all the concrete, break up the concrete, so it's, and separate it, so it's a proper size for a ton grinder. Uh, so after we get this all done, there'll be a big pile of concrete. We hire a ton grinder to come in, they grind it up, and then it can be used for highway, or it can be used for me, for roads in the landfill or something like that. It'll be a usable piece of, uh, concrete, uh. I don't know if he will separate the concrete on sizing, so that maybe some of the smaller stuff could be used for the highway from riffraff. I don't know about that, but he will separate it, they'll also separate the metal out, metal will be run through recycling, through, uh, baldens. Bring a dumpster out and we'll put it in there, uh, and then there are some tires in there, there is possibly some. Type of trash, by that, I mean, there might be some plastic in there or something like that, or plastic over it and stuff like that. He's gonna have a dumpster, we're gonna have a dumpster set out there, he can put all that in a dumpster, to go into the landfill, that's all included in that sixty-five thousand dollar price. So, dispose of the tires, the trash, the metal, they'll separate the concrete, any dirt that is left. Will be used for contour to re-landscape that whole area, to make it so it's. Maintainable, so that we can keep it cut and looking proper, when you enter into the landfill area, so it won't create questions. The other thing is, if with that sixty-five thousand, the entrance area for this, and we told the commissioners this. If they do sell that property to the people, it would be nice if they would have those people pitch in. Part of that sixty-five thousand to clean up that entryway, cause this is helping them, cause if we don't clean it up, they have to clean it up.
I go farther, a little farther back, I was apple great involved in it, and you guys, you just, you've never been out there. Where are your hands? You really are, I wrote up a report, you went to college. But it's really, it's really all taken care of, uh, all we have, thirty-two acres?
Uh, the landfill is thirty-two, then there's an additional, like thirty-two acres that is a landfill, right?
And this, you're talking about selling it?
They're talking about selling ten acres of that, to, to, uh, sold.
But now, that hasn't been brought into the council, and. One, I thought they couldn't sell county land without.
It's, it's a property between the railroad and the recycle building.
Right, cause I know when we talked about jail, we said the council had to sign off, and because they were selling it to the city. A government unit, they counseled it now to sign off, but I thought they sold it in individuals.
And, and again, address that, and I can tell you, it's, nothing's been set, they're doing all preliminary stuff.
Okay.
Roger and I have met with the company, it's, or it's, it's input. Input who they're talking with, and they have hired, they hired an environmental company to come in and do their job. We met, Roger and I met with that person, we walked the area, rode the area, looked at everything, answered a bunch of his questions. Because he, of course, has questions about the mounds that we were looking at, and there's other mounds back in there that were, uh, engineered. They had a lot of, uh, mulch behind the solid waste unit, and this is several years back, they needed to get rid of it. So they dug a hole, and they pushed a lot of mulch in the hole, which is legal, I mean, it's, you know, it'd be dirt. But they didn't put the dirt back over top of it, they left the mounds of dirt, so they're back there, so when they see that, when an environmental sees that, it was. You know, you have to explain to him, and so it just brings a question up if there's gonna do any development there. Um, and it affects everything like that, so those are all there, I think, but it's still good, solid property and everything. Anyway, what I'm saying, I don't know what stage they're in, and I don't know why they haven't, why you haven't gotten wind of it. I talked to Tom about it, Tom was aware of it, when we were driving through, we told him, this is what they're looking at. It was, I would recommend, bring it up at your next joint meeting on the sixth, and maybe they can explain the problem.
That was, I'm wondering, sell or do you wanna?
Yeah, at least it. That would be a conversation you would wanna have, and I don't know what MPAs guidelines are for.
If they have. The only thing, when I was in the, in the meeting, one thing I know, there's ten, it's been on for ten thousand dollars. And, uh, but I don't think it's a done deal, yeah, what it sounded to me.
Right, what are they gonna use?
No, it is not, it, uh, Jeff, um, we, the town's not gonna be any use of it at all.
Okay.
It's gonna be somewhere else, but, um.
They talk into the school?
You know, all I know is, and I'm getting ready to ask Rick, which is, I just heard this information. And I saw Bruce waiting, calling you, that information when I, Tim told us. But what I was gonna ask you, Greg, is that if you go south, down from the mansion. The grinder somewhere down in here will need some work, like that's, that's the five hundred eighty thousand dollar project that's supposed to be done. Beatersburg is gonna be, they're sending those to the county, aren't you, already, because they want it cleaned up. Because it's getting into their system.
Whole new system now.
Right, and so, what I was gonna ask you, Greg, you know the road where that grinder's gonna go in? It was back like that, back towards the county. You run that road there?
I've been on it.
And it's, and he's. You can't get across the old railroad track, there's actually a creek back there, you can't get across some stop, there, you can find a way to, to. Forge that creek in a certain area, but you're off county property.
So that's so, you know, the, the road is gonna be made between the building.
The old scan house.
Right. And. Are we asking, do we have to put that in or do they?
No, they'll put it in, they'll put it in, and they'll have to do all that, it'll all be their job, put the road into their property. Well, I take it back, Tom, that would be the agreement that you would need to do in the purchase. And it was, because it's like I told commissioners, see, my gate is at the edge of solid waste. If they sell that land off, my gate's gonna have to be moved, okay? I can't see why I should have to pay for that, a county'd have to pay for that, I think it should be on the agreement with the company that's buying it.
That's why they're running through that debris you're talking about.
Right, right, so if my, my gate would be moved to the east. On that road, on landfill road, it'd be moved to the east just past the, uh, the shed, the old waste deal shed. Just past that, that's where my gate would be, and I would have access then back to landfill. Before that area would be a road down in, there are ten acres. But then, back west of that, there's already a road there that comes out of solid ways, that solid waste property, comes out, loops back out onto landfill.
We're well marked, we really are, it is smart job, right, and the reason why I thought that, but they put in these wood mills. I always heard that, I always heard that, that the county had put, had put a road back in that room.
No, 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 the landfill went from Warren County, when they put all that in, the agreement was, they did that. And a lot of the roads were put in, uh, back to them and around them and everything, they would take them back out. And the land was replanted, and this was all on the company, not county, but on the company, but they took that out. And a lot of the rock and stuff went back to the farmers, they, they gave the farmers the option to have the rock, and a lot of farmers. Saved the rock at their place, cause they used it, we happened to, the firehouse in State Line happened to get a bunch of that rock given to us. By other farms, to build a lot of party here, but that was all on the company. And it's all in agreement when you do a purchase, what you want them to pay for, and which one, county pays for. The one thing that Travis and Steve from Solid Waste brought out, if they make that agreement, the commissioners need to have that company also. Redo the road, landfill road coming in there, because as you know, when you pulled in there, right, as soon as you get off of forty-one. It's a pretty rough road, it needs to be repaid, that would be the time to say, okay, you guys go ahead and buy this, and right, but you're gonna need to redo this road. So, anyway. So anyway, that, that is going on, and they've got that, uh, the other thing is, just to give you a heads up, the well testing. Uh, and I haven't said this to you, I did share it with the commissioners, I can send it to Colin, well, Colin probably has it, she can share it with you. Okay, I'll send it to you, it's the well testing, uh, they did October to December last year, it was sent to the state. Uh, our, our levels have pretty much started coming down, uh, all the things, we've got some wells that have shown. Periodically going up, coming down, going up, coming down, I've shared this with Roger, we've had a long discussion about it, we just had another discussion just a few minutes ago. During your meeting, the, we don't see any reason to do anything right now. It is going up, one well is going up again, but it still hasn't gone out, out of our regular realm. In other words, yeah, five years ago, it was at the same height, but it went down, now it's back up, so it's doing this. We don't think we need to jump the gun on anything, because three years ago, him and I went out and paid twenty thousand dollars to do. A test in the farm field, which is called upstream from the landfill, to see if it was coming into the landfill, and it wasn't our problem at all. But it wasn't, there's no levels out there, so it, it's apparently ours, but why, we don't know. But once again, Roger's point was, we did that test, but it was like three months after they had already tested the wells. So we don't know, maybe there could be a surge coming downstream or something, but we don't wanna spend another twenty months. We wanna win, and since we've recapped these landfills and gotten all the water starting to run off and shed off. Our levels are coming down, we're really happy with what they're doing, and we think another two to three years out, it should give us a pretty good picture. I'm trying to stay on top of them, keep all the low areas out, keep it tapered, keep the streams open, so everything runs free and everything like that.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at on that, and, uh, everything comes out there, everything looks good, and we're doing it the best we can.
Okay.
And if anybody else would like to come out, I'll give you a runaround, show everything out there.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? The, the ton grinder is not part of the sixty-five thousand, the ton grinder is down the road. Probably don't know, we'll, we'll worry about that then, that's not even. Uh, probably don't know, we'll, we'll worry about that then, that's not even, I mean, boss, we don't know how much concrete we have, that would be the factor. If we don't have enough concrete to bring it in, we won't bring it in, we'll haul it over to the county. And let the county work it into their, well, they're working into their riffraff, because they do that.
Greg, you see how it said before, we got a tug rinder out there?
Yes, that's, they're tearing out all the, uh, rest area, yeah, rest area and the old waste field area, they're tearing them out, they're rigging that up, that's a tug rinder, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, uh, a couple things, Carol Freeze called me this morning, and Senator Brown sent a representative out. There's like a Cades Bridge at three o'clock, and she wanted to know if there's any council member could come out there and meet with them. What's your name? Kate, uh, Kate's Bridge.
The cover bridge?
Yeah, the cover bridge, okay, I'll let her know you're coming, she'd like somebody from county government to meet with her. With him.
And you know, Jim, I've heard myself went out there, I was wrong, I went back, and we went to Wallace.
He's trying to get some money from Senator Brown's office to, to go after some funds, so, uh. He's sending a rep, and they'll be there at three o'clock, so I'll let her know, we're gonna be there. Uh, you two mentioned Kyle Mann, Mannville?
Yes, he was here.
He was here.
That's, yeah, I asked him about being a county attorney, that's not his forte, and he. But he does do a lot of contracts for wind and solar, and he said he'd be glad to represent us on a. Case by case basis, so if you guys agree with that, I'll have him come to the market next week to answer any questions we might have on that. On the hearings for, for that, and I said, if they come down the road here, they'll do an individual, so we still need somebody for. All right, because Zach Curry, March sixth. March sixth, okay, I was, I was. If I know Taylor Powell.
I met him at my last J, I'm a J right.
J right, I mean, he's younger.
He's a federal defender.
I think the veteran does the city of, I mean, I'm a city attorney for government, yeah, yeah, I, 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 I only know him from. Couple of J, I mean, J right, I mean, I know everybody else. Okay, and whether he's.
That's not like kids covered up. Same today.
Okay, last, I didn't give you, you don't have my phone numbers. Uh, if you have any questions, you can call me at T M F at any time during the day at work, um, that's seven six two thousand, one thousand. And my extension is three two one, and don't worry about my fallen office, I'm a part-timer anyway, so. So, call me anytime there, and I think y'all have my cell phone numbers, so, do you have any questions? My cell phone, seven six five, five eight five, six seven four four.
Thank you.
Yeah, call that, and then, the last, I didn't talk to you last month, do you, every month, you get this financial report by funds? If you have any questions about what funds can be used for what, feel free to call and ask me, I, I have a detailed list. Because when I first went on the board, I sat down with state board of accounts and asked them all the different accounts, what we could use it for, and we do, um. What ones we couldn't use, and so I, but we do have a lot of new. Some of the main ones, but not all of them. Deal with that, so they're, they're just, uh, a lot of. Run-throughs with Colin, but, uh, that's someone, I, I, and I will get that, I, just like this. Uh, city town forecast, I'm still, I've been working, I work with Phil Lewis, and I've worked with Sharon Nagel, trying to get some way. You'll notice that that's never been spent in probably twenty years, and it's money that. It's just sitting there, and the only way right now it can be spent is if. The ci- cities or towns file a case in the courtroom against somebody. Then they can use those funds, well, none of them file, because all traffic tickets and stuff go through the county. So, you know, big cities use that, and I've tried to get Sharon to, you know, she's been trying to work on getting a. Some legislation passed where after ten years, if it's not spent, we can put it in county general, but she hasn't got any.
I don't know.
Cooperation from other counties, other legislators yet to do that, that's just, for example, one of the funds I could. Didn't figure out why it was kept built, right? You know, yeah, it's hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, you can't, uh, uh, do anything with it, so. Okay, enough of that, we have one, uh, all my notes, you heard me? Okay.
I have a few things.
Okay.
I'm only needing some money, sorry, um, I did do a spreadsheet, um. We're gonna need approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, consulting fees, I have about forty-three thousand that's needed. Uh, Roger has done extensive work for the county, unfortunately, he turned those bills in after the first year. So, a lot of my matters I had available are not available. And there was no money put in the commissioner's budget for consulting fees. I, uh, I, I, and then also, here's a breakdown on his invoice. But his total, his invoice is total seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I'm short forty-three thousand, six twenty-six, twenty-five.
Is that the plan commission commissioners in the old jail?
Yes.
Okay.
The plan commission is a big chunk of it, uh, the highway has sent me money for theirs. And I had drains and landfill, they had money, but I need commissioners to eight thousand, nine hundred and ten, and the old jail. For the, uh, environmental study was thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
If I can have some direction on where to.
Uh, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand capital outlay under county council. Any objections using that to pay these consulting fees? And then, okay, so I want to take that, pay that, pay that all in the twenty-five capital outlay.
Okay, yeah, also, we're going to need a new server, which. It has been ordered, not, I didn't order it. And then also, uh, we have to have new email addresses for grants and things. That came in at eighty-seven hundred dollars, a little over eighty-seven hundred. And then also, the new server is gonna be close to ten thousand dollars.
So.
Server's at the end of its life.
On the email addresses, I noticed other counties, the council members have a county email address, and we.
Yes, you can. Yes, we just need to know, know, and that, that's the thing, like, for example. When, last year, when I went to, to, uh, filed the paperwork for the recycling program. Dwayne Rodrick was the president, he had to submit it, I did all the work, but he has to submit it. They wouldn't take his email address because it said mayor at whatever.
You see.
It has to be, they want to see a name in that address, and they prefer it to be I N dot com. And there is some security things that come available with this, so it really is to our advantage. Our email addresses, from what I understand, the company we have through that is raising it, and this is not that much more than what. We're, we'll be paying, but this has more benefits.
So we, well, all of us have.
Yes, if that's what you want. When I went to the, I went to the conference where they helped bring the county council, and you know, it's talked about a lot. And the big thing is liability, I mean, and I'm, so I set up a new email to try to keep my county council stuff separate. From the bank, because obviously that's a mess, you know, so I try to keep it separate on our part, it's some people have my email address in the bank, it's no. And so, you know, but the reason behind it was because if anything ever happens, and they want to look at everything. They can look at all of your personal emails, all of your work emails, I mean, it gets into a huge mess.
Yeah.
And we're, like, I would be a mess, because the bank would have to release stuff, you know, we, a big disaster, so.
Okay, well, again, we have, uh, the county council equipment, a hundred thousand. Uh, so I think that could fall on, fall under, or fall under, uh, the computer equipment, if everyone's okay with that.
Sure.
Okay, so I think fair to that.
Okay, yeah, one more thing, sorry. Yeah, this is.
Yeah, that's never, yeah, to be explained to us how this works.
What's that?
Enterprise leasing.
Oh, well, I had a video conference with Greg Amber. And, because I kept complaining, I don't have an invoice, I don't have an invoice, well, I finally got access to. To Tim, Tim set it up for me, so I have access to the account now, uh. The, uh, I.
I wish we had this, when Jason was still here, because I know Jason had still, he said he can't even explain it, he doesn't know how it works, and.
Okay, that is all, first of all, recycle and the corners van is taken care of. This is just highway trucks, and the, the, I can.
And we still don't know how much money we receive, do we, on vehicles they took from us?
Well, I can get that for you, well, let's see, is it on here? It's not on here.
Were all those funded?
They took those off.
Okay.
I complained about that, and those were taken off, I said, this is not fair, and they were, it was an oversight. So anyhow, I can probably find out, I think I might be able to get a report that shows you what we got for each vehicle that was traded. But this is the amount on the spreadsheet is what we need to be every month. As, uh, this statement is dated one, five, and twenty-three. Uh, we have only a thirteen thousand dollar credit, so after we pay February's. We are going to need some money.
For the credit?
Thirteen thousand, yeah, we have a credit of thirteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
Because, you know, I, I guess I, I would like to know how much money we received from all the vehicles. Because a lot of these, even two months ago, he hadn't even received vehi- all these vehicles yet.
He, I think he's got all these.
Does he have them all now, so what happened to all that credit?
Yes, that's what that is. And the pay max was supposed to be paid out of that credit first, so if we don't have.
For new vehicle.
Yeah, and, and without the, uh, beginning balance, uh, being the credit, we have no idea.
Right.
Take them out of the works.
Yeah.
And that was.
Nine, nine thousand waters.
So I will, I'll try and get that for you, if I can, I will ask them for that.
If we could have that in the March meeting, if we can make a decision.
Yeah, but this is something that has not, every other weeks for the county highway has been taken care of. This, we didn't appropriate any money at all, so.
Right, because the council before voted not to fund it because. State board of accounts said that if we do not fund a contract, then that contract's null and void, because. We were never explained anything about what we were getting, and we wanted to know what we were getting for. The new vehicles we turned in, plus the old vehicles, and we still haven't received any.
And we've asked Enterprise to come in here, and they have not came in here to explain this process.
We even assigned two councilmen, to me, we were never contacted.
Jim Lee and Tom were supposed to meet with the commissioners with Enterprise, and they never contacted, either one of them.
If, if I can, if anybody wants to see what is available to me through the enterprise. Log on with the, with the statements, I'll be happy to show you what I have at my disposal, I'm still learning, so. You know, what, what is available.
Give you a little time to.
Right, so.
Move through there, and then I'll, I'll be fine to look at it, I'd just like to know what, what money we would see for the vehicle spec, for our brand new vehicle. That we had just bought.
Okay, so if we were to lose, you got thirteen, thirteen thousand dollars with the credit?
Yeah, I had more in that one time.
Yeah.
But it's gone.
Yeah, do we, do we take the thirteen plus this ninety-four and now give us the total for the year? Like, for last year?
I need more.
This year, same as last year.
Thousand, so that, that.
Well, we didn't have all the vehicles last year.
It's that ninety-four times twelve will be what, once a year, at least. And did I put that on that report?
Yeah, because see, some of these say months in service, some of them are only for five months, but then it's a five-year plan on some of them.
Right.
And some of them, it's only have one year.
I left that on there for you, I thought I did.
Yes, you did, so, so that means like this. First one, the Chevrolet Silverado, it's only got one year left on the, the term of the lease.
Oh, sure.
And yet, because this one's got sixty, it's like sixty months, but all those only have twelve months. Yeah, so.
And that, that's as a, I did that as a February, so. Just did a.
But yet, some of, like that one says it's only been in service for eleven months, some of these five months. So, they've only been in service for five months, ten months. Yeah, so what, what kind of credit did we have?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you can.
Get that iteration.
Okay.
Send it to you, so you can look at it before we.
Um, anybody else have anything else?
Uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna give a webinar with the state on budgets. Also, coming from Sharon Nagel at the, you know, at the, um, economic development dinner that we had in Tuckley County. One of the Benton County, this is just for your information to look forward to in the future, but. They sold off one of the Benton County wind farms, it was valued, um, before the purchase at a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. Somehow or another, British Petroleum got that down to eight million.
Whoa.
Would you remember?
Okay, so, one of the wind farms in Benton County, the value prior to the, prior to filling it is a hundred and sixty-nine million. And somehow or another, British Petroleum got it across eight million. Yes, and my husband said, the only thing he can think of is they're gonna go in and put in better turbines, more efficient turbines. So they drop the value on the current, and hopefully, when they get the new turbine on, it will increase that value back up. But I, I just think about that when it comes to like numbers we're looking at.
Yeah.
There's always value, um, in some of the animals, there's always a value to them, but.
For how long that, that year, that twenty-two year old vehicle? Well, that means we're loose one, yearly.
Because some said twelve, some said sixty.
You know, it could hit a bomb. Who you got?
The trucking is, like, the pickup trucks, I think are, are less. The work trucks have. And these kids got trucks last of the life, so they're at like three years, maybe. It's way, I understood.
Has this been going on about thirty, thirty years, hasn't it?
At least two, two, at least, because they were talking about it when I came in, and then, you know, they almost started getting me too.
We ran on the same time. Yeah.
Okay.
So, we just started with them.
Okay, Tom, second.
But.
Okay, all, okay, thank you very much, we mark six.
Well, that's a buddy.
Yeah.
Definitely started talking back from most of the conference we did, man, and I thought someone should have had a remain still water.
I don't know. We're gonna talk about it comprehensive.